Please go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So being so being 102, I'll open up the hearing on House Bill 1716. And prior to that, I'll read a script that I need to read. As Chair of the House Child and Children and Family Law Committee, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor has a result of COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and select legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting by clicking on the following website address. HTTPS colon backslash backslash zoom.us backslash J backslash nine four eight six four nine four one eight two five. Or dialing one of the following phone numbers. One nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine or one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. Providing public notice of the necessary information for assessing the meeting, for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. This information is printed in the House calendar. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during a meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 271-3600 or email at hcs@leg. state.nh.us. Adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. I want to introduce the staff that are on in the meeting assistance. Christina Dyer is the House Committee Researcher, is the meeting host. Additional additional House Committee Service Staff providing support are Brad Greenland, Jen For and Pam Smarley. This is a public hearing on House Bill 1716 to be followed by a public hearing on Senate Bill 295. A copy of each bill has been posted on the main page of the General Court website under the heading Remote Meetings. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. We'll start the meeting by taking the roll call attendance. When each members would each members state their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which was required under the right to know law. So I'll ask the actually prior to that, if there's any, if there's any member of the public wishing to testify, they would need to register using hcs@leg.state.nh.us. And if you could include your name and phone number. Thank you. And I'll ask the clerk, Representative Connors, to call roll call the attendance.
Thank you Chairman Long. Vice Chairman Marion. You are muted still.
Present and alone.
Thank you Representative Mulligan.
I'm present. I'm in my home. I'm alone in the living room, but there is someone in my dining room who was working on my laptop.
Thank you Representative Connors is here in my office alone. Representative Corson.
I'm here at home alone.
Thank you Representative Diggs. Representative Diggs, can you try again? Okay, your audio does not appear to be, your audio does not appear to be working. Can you signal us with a thumbs up that you're here, that you can hear me? Okay, thank you. Representative French.
I'm here alone.
Representative Grossman.
Hi everyone, I'm here. My family's in the rest of the house. I'm alone in this room.
Thank you Representative Lebec.
I am here alone in the spare room.
Representative Petrino.
Hi, I am here in my home office and I am alone.
Representative Weber.
I'm at my residence in Walpole and I am alone.
Representative Wazir.
Hi everyone, I am home in my kitchen. Currently I'm alone. I will have my kids join me later.
Representative De Simone.
Hi, good afternoon everyone. I am here in Atkinson in my sunroom and I am alone.
Thank you Representative Rice.
Hey everybody, I'm home in Hudson with, I have two kids at home.
Representative Horn.
Good afternoon, I am alone in my house in Franklin, sorry, I'm alone in Franklin, but my wife is also in the house.
Thank you Representative Camerota.
I am present, hello everyone. I'm alone in my home, but I have a new puppy. So I'm gonna mute myself when possible.
Thank you Representative Fowler. Don't see Representative Fowler here. Representative Juris.
I'm present in my home in Meredith by myself.
Thank you Representative Yocella.
I am present and home alone.
Thank you Representative Panasiti.
I am home in Amherst, I am alone.
Thank you and Chairman Long.
I am present in Manchester and alone.
Thank you, that completes the role.
Okay, thank you Representative Connors. At this time, I'd like to call Representative Baldassaro to introduce House Bill 1760.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. For the record, Representative Al Baldassaro, Rockingham County District 5, London Dairy, and I'm also at home in my office and my wife in Anadia. I have brought this bill HB 1716 forward because recently I have received many phone calls. Now I'm gonna bring you to a little bit of history prior. In 2017, I introduced a bill on behalf of a couple of veterans thinking this was an issue in New Hampshire. The Supreme Court Justice in their, what do you call them, their lobbyist, was at the hearing and he said, "We don't do this in New Hampshire. It's not a problem." Which I agreed because I myself went to a divorce, I myself who collect disability. I myself brought forward the federal law under IM-98-03 in my divorce and they did not use my disability. But I also got custody of my children at the time, so there was totally different case for me. But the, I can't remember his name there that in the Judiciary Committee that said that the courts were not doing this. And then all of a sudden within the last, just prior to me filing, the late entry of this legislation was, I started getting phone calls from veterans, homeless. Okay, our veterans with issues there that they were using the disability for child support or for alimony. Now, I want to please make this important. Veterans do not want to get away from paying child support. That's not the problem. They pay child support, they, you know, make sure, you know, many of them, we might have wanted to, I don't know. But for the most part, we, you know, like to take care of our responsibilities. But in this case here, the veterans' money, the judges were not going in accordance with the IM-98-03. And I sent you all a copy this year, which goes into the apportionment, special apportionment. Okay, where it talks about how the gaudistment to arrange for a gaudistment, you know, for child support must go or should go to the VA. We have some judges have been deciding that they don't need to do this. The Supreme Court, there was a case that went forward just recently, which the Supreme Court did not use the IM-98-03. And Sean Branstad will testify on what happened in that Supreme Court decision. Now, the information that I submitted to you is on different veterans, that you, you're gonna be able to see what's going on. This is causing homelessness here and possibly suicide within the veteran community. Okay, because when you take away almost everything they make, now you've got problems because some of these veterans have issues, mental issues, PTS issues, PTSD issues. And like I said, it's causing a huge problem within the veteran community. The VA has identified this throughout the country. And this is why, you know, they came out in 1998, which was published there by the, for the IM-98-03 to correct this problem, okay, to their rules and laws. But if you read it, there's a process where the children can get, you know, support, but it must go to the VA for them to make the decision. Now, why did they do that? Because when you get disability, 100%, there's a certain amount of money that you get extra because you have children. And I agree 100% that that money belongs to the children, to take care of the kids. Not one veteran should be excused from supporting their children. And I don't know any veteran that don't support their children because the many that I talked to, you know, were involved in their children's life. But some of them have been pushed away for financial reasons. If you look under the child support law, and we added this into the bill to make a change under the Section C. I put in, we put in the law, the federal law, okay, that, you know, New Hampshire should be complying with. My understanding of the court is our law was starined on this here and the judges couldn't do this. This is why we're pushing because not all veterans know the federal law like I do. When I went to court and brought it to the judge and I thought the judge was very, did a great job. And he complied with the federal law because there was nothing really in state law. Okay, the formula needs to be fixed on this here because there's disability like myself. I probably spend $200, $300 more a month on over the counter medication that I need, that I'm required, you know, to get, that the VA don't issue me, that I purchase from, you know, for chest and other things. I won't get into that, but. And I can see other veterans probably having the same issues that I have that need to spend this extra money. But when you take away a lot of their money and you add in their dollars into the formula, the ones who make out on this here is the courts. Because under Title III D, when they collect money to the courts, the federal kicks in money. Okay, to this. So when you look at the bill, and I don't have it in front of me as far as the fiscal note, but I heard there's a heavy fiscal note. What that is, is the court's not gonna get that money from the federal government because they're not taking advantage in collecting the money from the veterans. Okay, they're not adding in their disability. So this is something that we need to look at and make sure and push that aside and say the court shouldn't be making money off of the veterans disability that's being added into the formula. Now I won't go on because you're gonna have quite a few other veterans that are gonna testify on this here. But in closing, I want to just make sure that we understand the veteran community is not trying to get out of being, you know, supporting their children. They're just trying to get out of being homeless because they're taking a lot of that money away from them and they can't afford to live. And you've got some that are living, I think in Dover or in other areas out of their cars here in the state of New Hampshire. Okay, because of what's going on. And I didn't know this until recently, when I went and said, "Wow, this is something that needs to be brought forward, you know, that we fix." And every legislation that I put forward to is normally nonpartisan. My good friend Representative Linda Massimila was supposed to be on this here, but because of the quickness on, and then what happened with the virus, she never got a chance to sign on. Okay, so I wanted to make this a nonpartisan bill, which like every other bill I submitted throughout my 14 years, I've always put Democrats and Republicans on the bill. But that's the reason why there's only a couple of sponsors on there. And that's all I have, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you Representative. Any committee member have a question? And I see Representative Horn, hands up. Representative Horn. Christina, are you controlling the mute?
Yes, and sometimes, if you're getting, there we go, okay.
Okay, Representative Horn.
Thank you for your testimony Representative Baldassaro. I just have a question. How are these veterans not employed who are seeking to support their children? Could you expand on what's preventing these veterans from getting gainful employment?
Well, you have some that are 100% disabled, even though some of the 100% do work and that money is included. It's not that they're not supporting them. Okay, but you have some that can't work. Some with, you know, on mental issues. They're involved with the vet center, they're involved in and out of the VA. I mean, you gotta, I mean, I can only use me like it is example. Every six months, I go into the VA and get blood. Every, I, another couple of months, I go get a shot in my spine. You know what I mean? So on different medical issues that I have. So I can imagine a veteran with PTSD, you know, it's hard for them to hold a job. But they do get the, you know, some on their retirement, the ones that were put out. Get a, not only a VA disability, but they also get a retirement.
So follow up Representative Horn.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. So when these veterans made the decision to have kids and bring kids into the world, they may not have had these disabilities. And since having had the children, they suffered an injury or qualified disability after the child's been born. This isn't a decision to neglect their child. It's a decision being forced by the injuries they sustained?
You know, that's a great question there Representative. I appreciate that because you're right. Nobody, I went into the Marine Corps healthy. Never did in a million years that I expect to have gallbladder outkit, you know, and all this tooth bits of cancer and from, you know, and medication issues and other stuff. So yeah, this happens for their service in the military. And throughout the years, you know, it gets worse, you know, on the veterans and it's a shame. You know, I think we owe it to make damn well sure that not one veteran is left behind in the state of New Hampshire at the same time taking care of our children.
Representative Marion.
Thank you. Thank you Representative Baldassaro for bringing this to our attention. I, the Children and Family Law had before it, House Bill 362, which has been sent for interim study at the present time. And it has to do with issues related to child support. And this was done in, in concert with a study done by UNH on child support, which is required by law every four years for us to review this. So my question to you is, if you, are you aware, it's a two-part question. Are you aware of the fact that, that there is this ongoing review at the present time? And if so, is there some particular urgency that we respond to, that we vote on this particular piece of legislation in this year?
Yes, there is. And the reason it is because it's forcing veterans to be homeless. It's forcing, you know, suicide and other things that are going on in the state of New Hampshire. HB 362, I'm the ranking member of the Veterans Affairs, former chair, vice chair. I've been on that committee for 14 years. I haven't been invited to that to speak on behalf of the veterans. We've got a great chairman, Trish, and I don't even know if she even been invited to have a say on that committee. That deals with another part of child support in dealing with the formula. The veteran community, the veteran's disability is not in that.
Very good. I have Representative Panasiti. Did I say his name right?
Panasiti.
Panasiti, thank you. You had your hand up.
Is muted.
He's muted. Dyer, could you take him off mute?
Yeah, is there a prompt for you Representative Panasiti that allows you to come off mute? There is.
It wasn't allowing me to do that. Thank you Mr. Speaker. In full disclosure, I'd like to say that I'm retired military, so I understand what Representative Baldassaro is talking about. But a question to Mr. Representative Baldassaro. The disability money that a veteran receives, can you explain where that money comes from and what, and is that money a part of, or a certain percentage of the individual's pay?
Oh, the, the money comes from the VA. On there, and they issued on a monthly basis, the first of the month, to every disabled veteran. Anywhere to see if you're 10%, 20%, 30%, all the way up to 100%.
So this just not. Based upon the, excuse me? It's based on the service member's rate and rank, correct?
I, no, the disability has nothing to do with rank or service, how many years. The retirement deals with rank and this, you know, service of years. The disability is a total of apples and oranges from retirement to disability. So if you were injured in the military and you were put out on a medical discharge, they retired you more than likely, okay, especially during time of war. And then your disability is a separate fund that comes from the VA to help the veteran live and survive. Okay, so now.
Correct me if, follow up, Mr. Chairman. Correct me if I'm wrong though, Al. Is it, is it based upon the individuals, if he, if he's a master sergeant or if he's just a corporal, is it the same amount of money?
Disability is the same. It goes by with your percentages. If you're 10%, 20%, all the way up to 100%. Dealing with veterans, that could be 10%, 20%, could be 30%, all the way up to 100%. It has nothing to do with your rank. If that's, then they would double mine as an EA with 20, you know, two years in the Marines.
Very good. I don't see any other questions. Are there any other questions? I don't see any, so thank you Representative. Wait a minute, I got a question from Representative Petrino. Petrino.
Thank you. Thank you Mr. Chairman, and thank you Representative for taking my question. I actually don't know the answer to this, so maybe you can give me a little clarification. I'm taking a look at Social Security disability payments and that those are garnished for child support. What would be the difference in this regard concerning veterans disability?
The difference here is on the veteran's disability is, first of all, a veteran that's getting 100% disabled can collect Social Security disability also. We're not going after that. That money should be in there. You know, even though it's not a marital asset by the law, it is a part of use for child support. We're not touching that. The veteran's disability is designed for veteran to be able to live and be able to pay for any other stuff, their medication above and beyond that you use like me. You know what I mean? So there's a big difference there. Like I said, once again, apples and oranges on this. The federal government came out with a law on, you know, the disability for veterans. Social Security didn't. And I hope I answered your question. And if there's anything else, I want to thank you all for taking the time on hearing this very important, you know, issue facing our veterans in New Hampshire.
It looks like Representative Rice has a question.
Yeah, Representative Rice. I, I'm having a hard time unmute myself, so.
Oh, you can stay unmuted. That'll be fine.
I got phones ringing and all that, so.
I see, sure.
Representative Rice, who is muted? Okay.
I was trying. So Representative Baldassaro. So this is already a federal law. This is gonna put the state in compliance with federal law. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And follow up Mr. Chairman?
Follow up, sure.
So by putting us in compliance with federal law, we should not be hearing any more complaints from the courts saying, from people who have been to the courts saying that this has happened, correct?
You're 100% right. This should be corrected. The courts will comply with the law, you know, of New Hampshire. You know, and, you know, because if it's in federal law, we should be in New Hampshire law.
And one more follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Follow up, sure.
Does it do a child's, a child's relationship with their parent any justice to have that parent homeless? Because we are taking any of their, what little income they may have to live with?
Well, you know, that's a good, good question there because you're pushed, it pushes the veterans away that they've got a, you know, they're out in the street or they're, you know, doing everything they can to survive. They don't want their children to see them like that. I mean, I know some homeless veterans there that are hurting and they don't, you know, they don't even go around their children because of the fact of they can't afford to get their own apartment. Or there's not enough bed space in the state of New Hampshire for the homeless veterans. But then again, we have some that don't want to come out of the woods because we do a count every year. You know, so I, I just think, you know, New Hampshire should be where we don't leave one veteran behind. And we have a large, large population here in the state of New Hampshire of veterans, about 110, 120,000 veterans in the state.
Representative Yocella.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for taking my question. My question is regarding the Supreme Court judgment earlier this year saying that our current law is not in conflict with the federal law. And how you see that there's maybe more information that the, that the Supreme Court didn't look at? Or if you have that information or you know of someone that's going to testify regarding that issue in the future?
Yes, I sent you the, what the Supreme Court didn't look at under the IM-98-03. Okay, in the Supreme Court, you know, I'm, I got the utmost confidence in our Supreme Court on what they do. But I think there was failed to utilize the federal law in their decision. And I do have Sean Branstad who will be testifying, who is the case, and he will bring that up along with other veterans.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, one, one question I have, Representative Baldassaro, there's, there's a, there's a program called Aid and Attendance, which, which helps veterans with living quarters, with homes, with rents, and other, you know, food and what have you. So if I could hear from the homeless veterans, whether they applied for that and either got denied or, so, you know, my understanding is that there are programs out there for homeless veterans with respect to housing subsidies. So are you aware of the aid and attendance with?
No, I've, I've never heard of this. Mr. Chairman, I never heard of it called aid and attendance. I know we, Veterans Count, I know that we have the Liberty House, I know that we have Nashua, I know that we have, you know, homeless shelter there, homeless shelter in Plymouth, homeless shelter. homeless shelter there, homeless shelter in Plymouth, homeless shelter for families in Manchester. You know what I'm saying? But there is a program out of Massachusetts, and I can't think of the name, and I don't think it's Aid and Attendance and that is moving into Manchester, okay?
Yeah, I'm aware of that. Yeah, it's a federal, it's actually, it's a national company.
Yes, but they're not up and running yet.
No, they're not.
You know what I'm saying? So I am aware of that program that's hewn in. You know, they brought that up to the State Veterans Advisory, which I have a meeting tonight at 5 o'clock.
Okay. Yeah, I just got that off the benefitsva.gov.
Oh, yeah. I didn't know it was called Aid and Attendance. It's another name they use to the federal grants they get. And it's a great program once they get set up in Manchester.
Very good. Representative DeSimone?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for taking my question, Representative Baldassaro. In listening to the discussion, we talked about, or you talked about, veterans who are in shelters. Which quite frankly, I think is a shame. Do you think that if this bill were to pass, it would free up some of the income for those veterans? And give them the opportunity to join in on some of the other, like some of the other things like Representative Long spoke about, so they could get their own apartment? I can't imagine a veteran who is a proud man or woman having to have their child come to a homeless shelter to visit them. I just can't imagine what that would do to their psychiatric health.
You know, I agree with you 100%. It's an embarrassment. You know what I mean? And it's a mental thing on the veteran also. You know, thinking that I can't go around my children and them see me like this here.
Right.
You know, it's a shame that these guys, some of these veterans served two, three times Iraq, Afghanistan. You know, I'm a Desert Storm veteran myself, you know, and you know, it's a mental thing there when you, you know, you in these positions here. Because you went in the military successfully, you went in the military to die for your country and to come home and see that you're not getting the support is the shame. But I can't remember who brought up the Social Security. That was a great question because that's Social Security. They get, if you're a disabled vet, you're getting that also. And they're taking that money out for child support.
Thank you, Representative Rice. Can I have a follow up?
You can.
Thank you. Just a comment, Representative Baldassaro. I remember many of my dad, who was a World War II veteran. Many of his friends lived in the city that I lived in, in Malden, Mass. In a place called The Projects. And those projects were built for returning veterans who were, many of them were disabled and they lived in beautiful homes with their families. And I just think it's a shame that every state in the country doesn't do the same thing now for current coming, current veterans who are coming home.
Well, you know what you just brought up. I, my father was a Korean War veteran. If you're familiar with Cambridge, Massachusetts, I lived in Roosevelt Towers. It was for veterans there, it was The Projects. We lived there for a couple, few years, five years or whatever, until my father was able to buy a home and we moved, you know, up the street. So yeah, no, that used to be that way. Of course, those homes now have been transferred over to, you know, a low income and other stuff there. They're no longer just veterans.
Right.
Very good. And I see Representative Connors?
Thank you. Thank you for taking my question. Representative, I'm not too familiar with the disability formula. Does it take into account the number of children that a veteran has in the calculation of their disability payment?
Yes, it does. If you have one children, two, three, four, it adds up on how many children you have. And that money, rightfully, the certain portion belongs to the children. And that's why the VA came up with this law, okay, to make sure that your apportionment goes to them and they authorize that money to go from the finance center right to the family. Okay, that that money belongs to the children.
Right.
Is going around the system and not using it because they get more money under Title 4D by collecting it themselves.
Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no more questions. Representative Baldassaro, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Committee.
And next I'll call up Representative Horgan. Representative Horgan, are you available? Ms. Dyer, is he on? We can't hear you. You're muted?
Yep, he is right here. I've just promoted him. Just a moment and he'll be right on. Ah, there he is.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So I'm pleased to be the, pleased to be the second panelist on a virtual house meeting. A very, very tough act to follow. I'm, I was Representative Baldassaro, Representative Baldassaro is very eloquent as usual. And I certainly fled the underlying that veterans want to support their children. Certainly nobody believes otherwise. I'm not a veteran myself, but my father is a veteran. My father, my uncles were a World War II veteran, many other relatives are veterans, including, although he was about 140 years older than me, General Grant, the man who.
Representative Horgan, do you have testimony with reference to House of 1760?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. And so I sent in some written testimony, which hopefully.
We received that.
Okay, so child support payments for the benefit of the children, even though they're typically paid by a non-custodial parent, custodial parent. And that usually happens after the relationship between the two partners has fallen apart. And there's often a lot of resentment between the co-parents. And of course, often the children don't feel good about it. But anyway, regardless of how you feel about it, you're morally legally obligated to look after your children. Even if you're not in good terms with your ex. And then I guess that applies even if you're a disabled veteran, as Representative Baldassaro agree. And just by the way, I'm on the Judiciary Committee. I'm speaking only for myself. And I think I didn't formally introduce myself from Representative Timothy Horgan from Stratford County District 6, towns of Durham and Madberry. And there, anyway, and actually, I actually don't remember the Judiciary Committee hearing Representative Baldassaro referred to, although he is a frequent visitor to our committee. Anyway, so veterans disability payments are not just veterans themselves. The veteran's family is an integral part of the program. And if you're more than 30% disabled, you get extra payments based if you have a spouse or dependent child. And when the eligible disabled veteran dies, their children receive payments until the age of 18 or 23 after still in school. And the surviving spouse, in many cases, also is eligible for veterans. I think sometimes even if they're divorced. But they've been married to the veteran and then parents can get veterans. So this is a program which supports the entire family, which makes sense because when family member's disability affects the whole family. So excluding the benefits from state child support calculations flies in the face of how the veterans disability payments program is designed. Also, the fiscal note passes, and I actually have the bill and a fiscal note in front of me, and I've been looking at it while listening to Representative Baldassaro. Families will be forced to take more age from state assistance programs, hence from the taxpayers. It's also possible the state will be denied a significant amount of federal funding since this bill is in conflict with current federal law. 45 CFR Paragraph 330256 states that the state of New Hampshire's child support guidelines must consider all earnings or income of the non-custodial parents. So that means phrase, all earnings and incomes means all earnings and income. That includes the veteran's disability benefits, even though they're not subject to the federal income tax and so that's so I just think this bill is, and also this bill is unnecessary. There's no pressing need for it. Even though, well, I guess I won't make a comment about what's going on with the military possibly being used domestically. But which will cause a lot more PTSD if that happens because, and anyways, I think this bill is unnecessary. Certainly unnecessary at this time and unnecessary at any time. So I urge you to find it in expedient legislation. So thanks. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Representative Horgan, any questions for Representative Horgan? And I don't see any. Thank you, Representative Horgan.
Thanks. It's been fun to be part of history. Thank you for having me.
So Christina, I don't have any other reps on the list to testify. Could you just confirm that before I start going to the public?
That's correct. I do not have any others.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I have a list, Representative Connors, do you have that same list? That's what I'll be going by. It was emailed to us. So next on my list.
Representative Baldassaro, I have the list from Representative Baldassaro. I don't have one from the speaker.
HES? I believe there was one from HES, Christina?
Well, I did email it directly to you.
Oh, to me, not?
No, I included her as well, but I'll email it right now.
Okay, very good. So next I'll call Jane Eversby.
And I do not see her in the list. If she is in attendance, we would ask that you press star nine, which will raise your hand and move you to the top of the list. We did check and did not see the number or a name matching that. So she may not be here.
Okay. Next I'll call Nicholas Rinaldi. Is Nicholas?
I do not see Nicholas Rinaldi.
Okay, and for the record, Representative Fowler is here. I did see him, Representative Connors. Okay, next I'll call Laura Ryan.
She is in the list? And she comes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Laura Ryan. I live in Lundy Dairy, New Hampshire. I am a veteran, combat veteran, and I was asked to speak on behalf of female veterans who are custodial parents. In reference to IM-98-03, I just wanted to say that's not a law or a mandate. The apportionment process was meant to buoy the state process because the federal government is not allowed to intervene in divorce per the supremacy clause. So I don't feel like this is something that's necessary. And I also feel that it's detrimental to children and I'm going to explain why. I'm a single parent. I have a son with disabilities. My son has autism. I met my ex-husband when I was a corporal and he was a sergeant in the army. And he was making about $1,200 a month and I was making about $800 a month. And ultimately, we divorced because my son has disabilities and he requires quite a bit of care. Subsequently, after getting out of the military, he was rated 100% permanent in total. And he gets a total of almost $4,000 from the Department of Veterans Affairs. So with a $4,000 income, he is able to live without working because he can live on $4,000. And just so you know, if a veteran is 100% disabled, they are going to get over $3,000 a month. So if they are homeless, I don't know where they're spending their money, but there are apartments that are certainly less than $3,200 a month. The apportionment process is a very long process. As I said, it's meant to buoy the state process. I actually filed for my apportionment with my ex because his VA disability is his sole source of income in 2011, when my son was seven years old. My son is now 16 and I have not received one penny of child support from that entire period of time. In addition to that, he's required to provide health insurance for my son, which he has not done. And he gets Champ VA, which is provided to him free by the government. The state is the one that's supposed to drive the process for divorce. So the state is supposed to look, as Representative Horgan said, at all forms of income, including VA disability, to determine the proper amount of child support. Now, in the state process, when we went to court, there were things like discovery and discussions about our finances, because I am also a VA disabled veteran. I'm at 90%, so I get about $2,000 a month to support my son. And I can't work because I have migraines that induce blindness, but that's a whole other thing. So the state looked at our incomes and made a decision that he was to pay me $330 a month based off his Army income. I've never gotten a subsequent increase and I've never asked for one because I figured if you just gave me the $330 a month, we could call it square. The apportionment process is not favorable to the custodial parent because they're denied the opportunity for discovery. They're not allowed to see what the other party submits and subsequently, they're not able to refute any information. And it's generally not a fair process. I mean, I've been waiting almost 10 years just to get a hearing to get my apportionment heard. And because of, our secondary claims to VA benefit claims, they get pushed down the list further and further. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Godzey versus Wookiee. A court case which was filed against the VA because of the long amount of time that veterans have to wait for claims to be resolved. In Godzey, all the cases that file on behalf of those veterans who are filing for VA benefits got moved ahead of all the people who are waiting for their apportionment cases to be heard. The federal government has essentially stated that all forms of income are required to supply child support. And under 38 CFR 3501, child support is one of the things that is exempted. So in other words, 38 CFR 3501, I'm sorry, I'm not quoting exactly, and I know someone else is in the legal jargon and I'm not a specialist at that. But it exempts VA benefits from ordinary creditors, meaning bill collectors. But because that money is supplied for the family, it's sold into the family. I mean, we're talking about veterans who are out there, who are not paying child support and leaving their female veteran partner at a disadvantage in the system. Now, there are some people who say, well, the basic needs will be met because the kid can go on Medicaid and the kid can be on WIC. Well, WIC only lasts up to age five. What happens after that? Why should the taxpayer pay for Medicaid if the dependents should be getting it through Champ VA? Why should the taxpayer have to pay for those things if those other things are in place already? Now, in my case, my ex is getting Champ VA, but he refuses to allow my son to be under him. So I've paid for insurance for him. I've paid for orthodontia for him to the tune of $10,000. Because he's a kid who has disabilities, I have a lot of expenses for him. I paid for every penny of his insurance, even though the court said that he was required to cover it. Now, the VA disability is his sole source of income. He's getting almost $4,000. He can live off that. I've applied to child support enforcement through the state of New Hampshire. Roxanne Bryce was my caseworker. She knows that I've been trying to get the payments, particularly now with COVID-19. I need them because my son requires a tutor with remote learning because he can't handle it. And she would not enforce that. And the HHS, I've had emails from them stating they would not enforce. So I'm overrears of almost $30,000 on a $330 a month child support. My ex-husband has a farm. He has a $40,000 truck. And I don't wish ill against him for that. I'm grateful that he's able to have things in the world and he's doing well. But my son has to go and eat out of the free food line and free and reduced lunch. And why should he have to do that? Because if I got that $330 a month, I could be able to support him with other things. If I got that insurance coverage for him, I would be able to support him for other things. As I've stated, I've been waiting for hearing for almost 10 years. My hearing was scheduled for April 15th, 2020, and it was canceled because of COVID-19, which is going to set it back over a year. I'm still waiting for resolution. As I said, the apportionment process hinges on the state process, including VA disability in it. Because the federal government, under the supremacy clause, cannot determine amounts of child support because they can't interfere in states' rights and divorce and child support is considered state right. So the way it works is under the apportionment claim, you apply for it and they look at, number one, whether or not the child is residing with the non-custodial parent. If they're residing with the non-custodial parent, it doesn't apply. And number two, if that person is reasonably discharging their duty to support their child. They base that information on the court ordered child support. So if you take this out, then there would be no ability to determine. So, if you take this out, then there would be no ability to determine if the non-custodial parent were paying their child support because it is based on the state determination. The rules for the apportionment are very, they're unregulated, they're very subjective, and they're not clearly defined. They actually rely on the state to try and clearly define those. I tend to tell you that my ex was able to get an attorney to defend him through the VFW. I was told that I was not entitled to an attorney, even though I'm a veteran, because I am the one who is filing for the apportionment claim. I just want to make clear that there are many other female veterans like me who don't get a lot to live off of, who are not able to get our child support payments because our exes are living off VA disability. I do know that federal law states that if you exceed $5,000 in two years of child support payments, it's a federal crime punishable by law. Now, my next step, I can't get an apportionment hearing, is to go through that process. But I don't want to go through that process because from my perspective, it's counterproductive. I don't want my ex to have to go to prison to make him pay child support. It doesn't benefit me. It doesn't benefit him. All I want to get is the $330 a month. I mean, he is remarried now, so he's also able to live off his spouse's income. I don't have another spouse. I'm not able to live off any additional income, and that income is not considered in my son's divorce. And it shouldn't be because she makes her own money. But he does have the benefit of that, which the VA also did not consider. So, I hope you have questions for me because I do know this process very well. I do know that the state process is fair just because due process is sort of observed where it's really not in the apportionment claim. I don't want to see kids staying in poverty because their veteran parents can't collect their child support payments. I do know also, I do know that Mr. Bronstein is probably going to testify that many parents are agreeable to co-parenting. That has not been my experience. It is, divorce is kind of a vicious process, but children should not be a part of that. They should be supported by both parents, and it should be equitable. And you have to remember that if that female veteran who's applying for those child support payments, if they're living on the street, that's also not fair. I don't think that this should be supported because, as I stated, IM 98-03 is just a memo, and it's actually a list of options presented by the federal government to avoid criminal prosecution for veterans with disabilities. It's an option for the parent to apply for the apportionment claim. The state does not do it. I've been dealing with that for over 10 years. I am also a veteran. And I would really sort of ask, why would it be that if I'm a veteran and I'm trying to get my child support payment when I get less money than he does, that my consideration is less? So, or my child's consideration is less because really alimony and stuff between spouses, spouses can fend for themselves. Kids cannot, and kids need to be taken care of, and kids deserve that. So, I guess that's kind of it. I hope you have questions for me because I'm very familiar with this process.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ryan. We do have questions. Representative Horn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for taking my question. Somebody told me that the dependence factor into the disability calculation, and I was wondering if you could confirm that for me so that even if you're 90%, if you are 90% disabled, you get a payment. If you are 90% disabled with kids, your payment would be larger. Could you help me with that?
Yes, I can confirm that. The actual payment for a spouse is higher than anything else because I think for a spouse, you get, I don't know the exact amount, and I'd have to look it up, but it's possibly $200. For your first child, it can be around $100, but it decreases with each child. In this case, my son, his third child, he gets $29 for my son.
Follow-up, Representative Horn?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Representative Grossman?
Thank you, Chairman Long, and thank you, Maura Ryan, for coming to testify before us.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your service as well, and I'm a mom to a 15-year-old with autism, so I know what life can look like, needing a lot of support. I just have, I have a question regarding enforcement of the benefits, the medical benefits. Are there any consequences or ways of enforcement? You've said that you haven't received those payments, but are there any consequences in the system? Or does it just keep on spiraling of not? So, in your divorce decree, it states that he should be providing the medical insurance.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a consequence for not doing that?
The only way for me to enforce that is for me to try and get a contempt order. And at this, at this time, he's over two years and $5,000, so I could pursue a federal criminal prosecution, which would put him in prison. But as I said, I see that as counterproductive to our interest because I would like him to pay the child support, but I don't necessarily want him to go to prison to do it.
So, that's the only option? There are no ways, places along the way to get enforcement?
He has voluntary, voluntary options of enforcement, but he has not taken them. And I think that speaks loudly. Anybody who's dealt with family law knows that co-parenting is difficult, and it doesn't really work the way we think it will, obviously, because the police station is the drop-off and pickup point for a lot of people. It, co-parenting is difficult for many people. And in our, like, in his case, he could apply for Social Security disability. He chooses not to. And I have no way of forcing him to do it, and I wish he would because at least I would get something.
Thank you.
Representative De Simone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for taking my question, and also thank you for your service.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm just curious. You said that you're using state Medicaid for your child?
I am not. I have to pay for health insurance for my son.
You, don't you use Shampus, which is utilized by most veterans?
I do not have that. My ex has that.
And you can't get that as a veteran?
I am not able to because they strictly enforce PII, which means that in order for my son to get the Champ VA or Shampus, he would have to sign off on it, and I have never been able to get him to sign off on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? CNN, thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Thank you.
Next, I have Devon Church. Christina, is Devon Church on?
I'm looking. I don't see it. Devon Church, if you're on, could you please raise your hand by using star nine? Okay, don't see anyone moving on.
Next, I have Sean Bronstein. Is Mr. Bronstein on?
Here it comes.
Okay, great.
You're now able to talk, Mr. Bronstein.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Family Committee. Thank you very much for having me today. Thank you, Ms. Ryan, for also your testimony today. I appreciate what you've said. I do have a couple of additional points to what Ms. Ryan said. She's a very unique situation because she is dual military with the Champ VA. She can petition the VA to send in with a copy of the child's birth certificate and show that the other veteran is 100%, and they will automatically put her, put the child on. I've gone through this with a few other veterans. Unfortunately, there are certain situations with every veteran that make the cases unique. With my current case, which I'm sure some of you have seen at the New Hampshire Supreme Court, the biggest issue that I ran into was asking for due process through the IM 98-03. I asserted my rights through due process for the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, as well as the 14th article and 15th article of the New Hampshire Bill of Rights. I was denied this process specifically stating that the family courts are to adhere to the New Hampshire RSA 458 C5, and that was directly outlined in my divorce, which is why my case went up to the New Hampshire Supreme Court because they had overstepped the IM 98-03, which is the apportionment process for disabled veterans who may be on Social Security, which I am. A little background on me, I was in the military under five years. I was discharged medically. When I went in, I was physically and mentally fit. I came out, and I basically was broken. Since then, I also worked for the federal service. I was retired under OPM, Disability Retirement, through the federal service. Since then, I've had 26 surgeries due to my military injuries. I've also not been able to contain a stable job despite what my background is. Based on that, I went through the processes I needed to with the VA. I had to go through many hurdles, as some may know of how they work. And despite that, I was able to come out 100% permanent in total, backdated to when I got off of active duty back in 2007. I went through a divorce. It was very contentious. There is no doubt about that. But there's not a single veteran that I know that's a parent that doesn't want to help parent their child, including paying child support. I 100% believe that that is my child's. I owe it to them to give them every bit that I can. My issues come from my income is disability 100% through the feds, through the VA, and through Social Security. There were a couple of points that were made today about the review that UNH does with Kristen Smith that she did recently. I did contact Ms. Smith and, or Dr. Smith, and they clearly stated that they did not take any information taken into account if somebody was a veteran. So, when the court goes ahead and submits the child support order to the state, they're not sure if they're a veteran, so they're not able to conduct the IM 98-03. However, Mary Beth Odolini, who is a supervisor over there, as well as Jenny Rhodes, who is also a supervisor over there in the Title IV D office, I asked them multiple times to start the process of the IM 98-03, which it clearly states in Section 1 on Page 2 that the state 4D office and the obligee are to submit an apportionment request to the VA. I was told multiple times that they do not do that and that they would enforce to whatever degree they could up, including sanctions, and could cause me to be in contempt with a court order despite asking for a garnishment and despite asking for them to not enforce because I was in an appeal process. The state refused to do that. In fact, they sent me letters stating I was out of compliance and that they were going to enforce orders, including taking any, anything that I may have, including my driver's license. On top of that, when they submitted the request for me to show that I was in an appeal, they also discarded that and stated that they were still going to enforce and that I needed to figure out how I was going to get the additional funds, which, as 100% permanent in total, I am not able to work. It's not that I choose not to work. I physically cannot at this time. I have my daughter. 60 to 70% of the time, I was able to obtain 50, 50 with my, my ex-wife. But that on top of includes, in my testimony that I've provided you today, on top of paying child support, I also was ordered to pay private health insurance, which costs me over $621 for myself and my child. I also was told to pay child costs, including the amount of money I spend to have spent time with her. And with that, on top of child support, I'm, I'm looking over $1,000 a month. Again, I'm not saying I shouldn't pay child support. I'm just asking that the state go through the IM 98-03, which was given out back in 1998 from the August 1998 committee with the VA down in Congress in DC. Again, with the due process rights that I had requested, I was denied at the local court. I went to Supreme Court. I was also denied. I went ahead and I filed the congressional because I had asked the VA what I could do, and they said, since I was a veteran, I could not ask for it to be done, that the state must start the process. I filed the congressional with Congress Pappas's office. They did assist. The state still refused to do the IM 98-03. I went down to Boston Regional where the AFC, where the mandate comes out of, at the, at the second page, you could see the regional office information down there. I spoke with Ms. Rochelle Phillips, who contacted the state of New Hampshire once she found out that the state was not being in compliance with the IM 98-03. And the state went ahead and started the IM 98-03 process. What they also did is they informed the obligee that she was not required to participate in the actual process, which would be looked at as obstruction of justice. By not doing that, that does not provide me with due process because then the VA cannot look at both apples to apples to see what the child needs are. By doing that was a detriment to myself. I almost lost my home. I was in foreclosure for nearly 24 months. I went through the Department of Veterans Affairs for assistance. I even went as far as applying to Section 8 housing. I received a letter back from Section 8 that stated there was a seven-to-nine-year wait period despite being an honorable and disabled veteran. With that being said, I went through and I applied through the DHHS for assistance for my child and for me. And despite me providing to them their own manual, the FMS, FSM SR 005 dated 0100, it does say that veterans' benefits are to be included as earned, as unearned income, with the exception that benefits specifically designated as payment for hospitalation or medical services are excluded income. Based on what my injuries entail, as also what Representative Alba Borza provided with us, I take medications and have to be seen by outside providers because the VA can't provide me what, what I need. Those, that amount goes over what my child support self-sustainment is. So, right there, I'm already in a hole. In addition to the aid and attendance that somebody did mention on here today, the aid and attendance is for specific disabled veterans that need to qualify for that. And there is a backlog to receive that. You have to go through a very strenuous, checks and balances, I guess you can put, and there's a lot of red tape. I've applied for almost every single program I can qualify for, and unfortunately, I met with a lot of denials. It doesn't mean that I don't want to help my child. It means that I'm trying everything I can, but I can't sustain my own life, let alone my child's, if I can't live with the amount of money that I have and my legal, well, my legal bills themselves and also my medical issues as they are. There is a program called HUD, H-U-D-VASH, through the VA that is assisting veterans. But what they're finding is also that they're actually taking, including their disability compensation, for their child support, and it's leaving the veteran literal, literally nothing to even have for food. We don't qualify for SNAP because, or over income because of the VA disability benefits. There was another report out by the Department of Defense in May 2018, which I can provide to the board, where the May 2018 DoD report shows that they do see that the disability compensation does have a portion that is able for the family, but they see that those funds are to sustain for the disability, the disabled veteran because of the injuries they sustain. Based on the testimony today that we heard from the fiscal note with the, I think it was the fourth, I forget, I'm sorry, I apologize, for the note that's in there, the regulation under 45 CFR 459A. Remuneration for employment is based on if you received income from that employment. Since disability compensation has nothing to do with the time of service that you're in, including your rank or your pay, is not, it is not included as income, which is why the IRS does not include it in your taxes. In addition, the New Hampshire judicial system, when you are looking at doing any type of civil procedures, if you look on the protected income list, you will see veterans' disability benefits, and that reflects 38 5301A. I ask that this board approves this and. I ask that this board um approves this and and listens to our testimony. Um, and if there's any questions I can answer, please let me know.
Okay, Mr. Bronstein, uh, Representative Yo Kella.
Hi, thank you uh for re- for recognizing me. Thank you for taking the question. My question is um in regards to this. Uh, state agency, uh, state child support enforcement office not for um. Doing this uh apportionment request review, um, can that? Uh, I don't see that this bill would address that issue and it has, um, I guess, has that been fully addressed now that the? That the state agency or in or this since the um. Like the commissioner or their representative from the VA uh contacted New Hampshire, is that now being handled properly? And so that's no longer an issue, or do we need to um really address that in legislation? Or in some way um making that state agency follow that process and um? Yes, so.
Um, thank you for your question. Um, to answer simply um this, what we've provided with just adding the subparagraph in subparagraph D. Essentially, basically would show that the courts, when they're looking to do child support, that they would need to. Motion the state to initiate the apportionment process, which is listed under IM ninety eight zero three. Um, from there, it then goes to the VA, which assesses the situation as well and comes back with the determination of. What the veteran can actually provide through their compensation. And then they can go ahead and apportionment directly to the custodial parent, um, if they deem that it is necessary. Um, as far as is my situation cleared? No, it is not. I actually had to file another congressional this week. And I had to place a complaint into the Civil Rights Division um at the Federal Health and Human Services. Based on the non-compliance and the lack of due process I'm receiving through the New Hampshire State Courts. My specific ca- case um did not include the IM ninety eight zero three. They also listed the wrong um federal quote. Um, they actually, the correct one should be thirty one oh one and they listed thirteen oh one. Um, which has to do with Volk Rehab and not anything to do with my case. So the the court didn't even look at the correct uh federal guidelines that I had provided to them or the RSAs.
Thank you.
Are there any other members that have a question? I don't see anybody's hands up. Uh, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Bronstein.
Thank you.
Next I'll call up uh John Jett. Christina, is uh Mr. Jett here? We did receive some communications from him, test his testimony.
Yes, he is in the list. Let me find him. Oh, we may have lost him. Give me just a moment. Oh, there he is. Okay, perfect. Here we go.
Okay, Miss, Mr. Jett.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, to the members of the Children and Family Law Committee, thank you for inviting us uh in this conference today. Um, my name is John Thomas Jett. I'm a ninety percent disabled veteran. I served uh ten years and ten months of honorable U.S. Air Force service. I served from November nineteen ninety eight and was medically disability retired back in September two thousand and nine. Uh, for many years, uh, New Hampshire's RSA Title Forty Three. Uh, under the Domestic Relations Chapter four fifty eight C, the Child Support Guidelines. Uh, has inappropriately mandated the assignment or attachment of awarded uh disability. Uh, Department of Veterans Affairs Disability Compensation Benefits in all child support establishment. And um, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, child support establishment and enforcement proceedings in the state of New Hampshire. Um, as a result, the New Hampshire Courts, Department of Health and Human Services, uh, Child Support Division. And attorneys representing clients who are seeking support, um, support payments are not following with emphasis. Uh, the extent permitted by federal law clause as outlined in New Hampshire um RSA Title Forty Three, Chapter four fifty eight. Sixteen Alpha and Roman numeral one. Uh, Department of and the Department of Health and Human Services Federal Office of Child Support Enforcement. Information memorandum that we've been talking about IM ninety eight oh three. Uh, it's very important to emphasize too that the thirty eight United States Code, uh thirty eight UFC fifty three oh one. Alpha one, uh, non-assi- uh, non-assignability and exempt status of benefits. Are explicitly state that payments of benefits due or to become. Under any law shall not be liable to attachment, levy, or seizure. By under by or under legal or equitable process whatsoever. Uh, either before or after receipt of the beneficiary. Um, this written testimony was written in March, uh, prepared in March of two thousand and twenty when the committee was to hear that the family court. Had unlawfully attached my disability compensation without following the proper apportionment process. I affirm that VA compensation is not income. It is not remuneration of employment. Nor should it could be, uh, should it be considered in as such in any calculation in child support. There are veterans who are recipients of both earned income and disability benefits, as in my, as in my case. And I assert with my fellow brothers and sisters and aunts who serve, still serve, or have served. That disability benefits are to be excluded from the calculation of veterans, disabled veterans' base support obligations. Based upon federal law. It is very important custodials follow, custodial parents follow the Department of Health and Human Services Federal Office of Child Support Enforcement. The Information Memorandum ninety IM ninety eight oh three for proper apportionment process. As it relates to veteran benefits. Now, this is the same process followed when a veteran is unemployable due to disability. Who is the the recipient of SSDI? In this case, a disabled veteran who has veteran disabled bene- the disability uh benefits. And social security disability insurance should follow the, again, DHHS. Federal Office of Child Support Enforcement Information Memorandum IM ninety eight oh three. Process and apply for any child benefits under the Social Security Disability Insurance through the Social Security Administration. I thank you for your time and considerations. And again, I appreciate your time with us today and hopefully um we can get our message out there that this needs to be taken care of. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Jett. Are there any questions for Mr. Jett? I'm not seeing any here that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jett.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. You all have a good day.
Same to you. Uh, next I'll call up uh Mark Plant. Christina, is he available?
Take a look for us. I do not see him in the list.
Okay, uh, next I'll call up Christopher Ciency.
Okay, do you see him here?
I don't.
Go.
You don't see him either?
No, I do. Just.
Oh, you do? Okay. The committee, I'm just, uh, I have a list of public wanting to speak and that's who I'm going through. We do have Mr. Fraser. Um, with child support, uh, who's on, who's on and wants to testify. Um, so I'm just going through the list of uh people that registered, members on a pe- that registered to testify and.
All right, I think. Do you have Mr. Ciency? Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Ciency.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name's Christopher Ciency. I stay with Marine Corps, uh, four years active duty. I've been deployed overseas to Afghanistan and fought in combat. I've lost uh fellow service members in combat, uh, and I am an eighty percent disabled veteran uh from my service. Right now, um, I am a father of four children, um, and I share my children fifty percent of the time with my ex-spouse. And at this time, uh, my only income is my veteran's disability. Um, I am in constant pain every day and just, you know, struggle to maintain any employment as I have over the years and um. Right now, my main focus is taking care of my children and and providing the best life to them as I can. And um, I am being ordered to pay um. Approximately sixty percent of my only income, which is my veteran's disability and child support payments for uh. My ex, who's also working full-time and also able to uh attend school over at uh Great Bay Community College. Um, my spouse also uh lives at home with her family uh rent-free. And I have been ordered to pay, again, my my only income, uh, at about sixty percent of it uh to her. And um, it's leaving me uh basically uh unable to care for myself or my my children. Uh, for the fifteen out of thirty days while they're in my care, uh, without the assistance of my family. Uh, my family is able to, uh, you know, assist me with everything I need at this time, but I need this process. To be followed, the apportionment process, because uh they are calling my disability uh as a pension. That's how they're listing it in the Child Support Guideline Worksheet. And um, it is uh basically leaving me, uh, you know, unable to care for my family without the assistance of my family. And um, this is just, uh, you know, wrong. I know it's happening to me. I know it's happening to many other veterans out there. Um, and this just needs to get fixed and the apportionment process needs to be followed. And um, that's pretty much all I, all I have to say is because this is directly affecting me and my children. It's not that I'm, and I've never missed a child support payment. I've done everything I'm supposed to do. I've followed all of the, uh, you know, directions that have been. Put on me and this apportionment process is just not being followed and they are taking uh pretty much all of my income. And giving it to my spouse. Uh, this also um. Basically, my spouse said she's also receiving all the state benefits. And this is really, really hard for me too, because with four children, um, that, you know, their ages are six years old, five years old, and then I have twins that are three. I need to have them in daycare if I'm going it to attempt to work. But um, uh, at this time, again, my my disabilities are preventing that and the expenses for all the children are preventing that. But uh, my spouse, who's not following the apportionment process, she's receiving all the state aid. She's getting daycare for free. She's getting the food stamps. She's getting all of those state benefits. I've gone in and applied. And I was told, uh, my children are being claimed by my spouse, my ex-spouse. She's receiving one hundred percent of all benefits paid for all those children. And I have, uh, I cannot access them because the state will not pay out those benefits. Uh, based for my family for the fifteen out of thirty days they're with me. So my, my ex-spouse is receiving all those benefits. She's getting my uh sixty percent of my disability. And she's working full-time. So she, her household is is got so much more uh availability for for money and and all that to support the children. And I am just being, uh, you know, left behind and. Uh, if if this process was followed, um, you know, it would not put such a hardship on myself and my four children. Um, again, you know, I went through a very, very volatile divorce uh separation process. And I had to fight to to just prove that I'm, uh, you know, caring for my children and all that. And I, and I was awarded legal residency for all four children after going through DCYF and all that. Uh, just to now, uh, you know, now I have my children with me. And now it's almost impossible to even, uh, you know, raise them and put food on the table with, uh. You know, me being forced to pay almost all the dollars I receive on a monthly basis over to my ex-spouse. So I just wanted to, you know, be able to provide, you know, this is my testimony. This is happening directly to me and four children, uh, identical twins that are three, a five-year-old and a six-year-old. And, you know, again, they they're with me fifteen out of thirty days. And it's just, uh, you know, not right what's going on. I'm I'm unable to work. Uh, at this time, I've tried for many years and I I actually was working before. Um, I even went through a a divorce process. Um. I have very, very unique situation. I I had gained employment through my spouse's um brother. Uh, he referred me. I'd come straight out of the Marine Corps and he referred me there in, you know, in our divorce process, there was restraining orders, all that, all all dismissed and thrown out. Um, that cost me my job. And so I, at the time, I was working, uh, and it was difficult. Uh, again, that job was ripped out underneath my feet from a restraining order because uh you can't have. Uh, you know, family members where there's a restraining order, working together in the same building right next to each other. So I lost my job, was fired. And the family court just said, you know, you're making that money and they didn't care that I'm just eighty percent disabled. And and again, I I was rated at eighty percent disabled when I was twenty-three years old. Uh, I, again, I served in the infantry in the Marine Corps, went to Afghanistan and, you know. Some of my friends didn't come home and and the ones that did come home, we went through uh some very, very rough times. And, you know, I I would say all all my close friends that I served with, they're they're all disabled veterans. Uh, you know, and and we are all in in pain every single day. I wake up, my back's in in uh in awful condition. Uh, but I do what I need to do to support my children and, uh, you know, care for myself. But the apportionment process uh definitely needs to be followed and there's nothing that I can do, you know, at this point. Um, other than ask them to follow it and they just say no and they're taking my disability as a pension. And um, that's, that's pretty much all I have. If anyone has any questions for me, uh, I'm available to answer anything.
All right, good. Uh, I don't see any hands up. Uh, there, is there any member willing to ask a question? Uh, seeing none, I I I do have a question to Mr. Ciency. So if if this bill were to go into to effect and uh. Would pass, in your current status, how much support from you would would your children be getting?
Um, so they would essentially, right now, like I said, my my spouse is receiving all the state benefits. Uh, she's receiving, uh, you know, daycare, housing stipends, all that, um, which I'm excluded from. Uh, she has the kids half the time. She's working full-time. And I don't have a, I don't have income. I can't afford the childcare costs. I'm I'm uh unable to access those benefits. And if they did, they would just even the playing field. The VA would look at, you know, they they would review uh how they do. And they would see that I have the kids fifteen out of thirty days, fifteen nights they are sleeping here with me under this, under my roof and um. Uh, basically, it it would just make it so that this living situation, the children, when they're with me, that, you know, they they have an equal uh living environment. They have the same amount of funding coming in here, uh, just because right now it it is completely an uneven weighted scale. It's just, it's not fair. And when I am trying to have this process followed and and when I say, no, this is my disability. Uh, you know, they're looking at it and going, no, that is a pension. That is income coming into you. Uh, and it 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 is just disability compensation in in like I said, uh. Eighty percent disabled, you know, it's not a joke. It it's very serious and um. You know, it it affects myself and and all the other disabled veterans out there. Uh, you know, some people cannot work. Um, and and right now, um, I'm just seeing this happen. I've become aware of the legal process that needs to be followed. And, you know, I just want to get my story out there and and to have everyone see that. You know, this is happening, people out there. It's causing some veterans that have post-traumatic stress from uh being in combat. They come home and. All of a sudden now they're they're being ordered to pay all their income and, you know, it's the veteran community, you know, there's even more suicides from that. And, you know, it's the veteran community, you know, there's even more suicides from that. I know people that basically just give up on their kids. They, they, they are exhausted.
So Mr. Sianzi, I, I, I think you answered my question. What you're saying is that if this bill were to go through, in your opinion, the funding would be equal to your ex's and your funding? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And Representative Horn, you have your hands up?
I thank you for your testimony, sir. I was wondering, could you share me, the, could you share with us the explanation that you were given during the process where the state decided that only your ex would be getting support? If there's fifty percent custody, I would think that means the support would be fifty percent as well.
Yeah, so I can, I can explain that for you, sir. Again, you gotta bear with me for a second because it's kind of a, I can speed up the story. So when I was going through this whole divorce process, I had no idea it was coming. I love my spouse, everything was solid. And, but we did, you know, argue from time to time. And she would always say, you know, when we got in an argument, I want a divorce. So we, one day, normal, everything, I, I tell her I love her, kiss her, goodbye, the kids goodbye, come home from work. And there are police greeting me at my driveway with a restraining order. And I had no idea what happened. I had no idea what was going on. And at that moment, I went back to work the next day, told them, hey, I have a restraining order on me. And they immediately fired me because my, my brother-in-law worked with me. And they said, you cannot be here with restraining order on you because it's against your, your spouse and your immediate family members. I was immediately fired from my job. I lost my house. I lost everything because I couldn't pay anymore. I was only living off of my veteran's disability. I had multiple, I had D C Y F investigations against me for child abuse. I had police investigations for the same thing, you name it. My, my spouse claimed everything possible against me. I didn't have my kids. I didn't have anything. I agreed to do supervised visitation. I agreed to do anything to get there and be with my children and take care of them because they are my, my life. They're everything that I, you know, love and care for. So I immediately lost everything. I followed all the steps. Once family court, they, they, she was claiming she wasn't getting any compensation from me. But I, I kept her on my bank account. I kept giving her more than, she was spending approximately thirteen hundred dollars a month or more just accessing the account. And then the court went, well, we want to start, and this is while I was still being evaluated for child abuse, if that was actually happening or not. They ordered me to pay child support. My, my spouse's attorney said that I was working full-time still, even though I've been fired. They said that I was receiving more money than I was in disability. And then they claimed that I was making more in other veterans' benefits while I went to school. All of this was untrue, and I didn't have my children. I, I still haven't finalized my divorce yet because there's been a second investigation. All of these investigations of child abuse that have been used and weaponized against me to hurt me all claimed, they were all thrown out. There was no abuse. And the, the court, they said the children should be living with their father, and they changed their legal residence to my house. So I went from being an accused abuser to legal residence with me, half the time with their mom, half the time with me. And it's been a nightmare, like the other person, Maura Ryan, who gave testimony about co-parenting. It is very difficult. But at that time, when they issued this order, I didn't have my children. They hadn't corrected it. And still to this day, now I'm only receiving my veteran's disability as income, nothing else. And they are saying that is a pension, and you need to pay. And again, my, my spouse is receiving those state benefits. She's working full-time. She's getting me to pay her. And it leaves me financially strained, exhausted. I have to take care of myself. I got injured in combat overseas. My, my, my body, it is in constant pain from this. And it leaves me, you know, at a disadvantage. I, you know, struggle to take care of myself. And, you know, how am I going to continue to provide for these children where they're taking sixty percent of my income? And this, this process for apportionment is supposed to be followed for situations like this. And that, so, so I think I answered your question as to why the trial was, was issued because it was as these investigations were going on. But now, even as they proven that I'm a good father, I never did anything, the things you said, I'm still being forced to pay, and I have the kids with me fifteen out of thirty days. It doesn't make any sense to me. But this would correct that. This would be able to allow me to go back into family court and go, hey, guys, this is the apportionment process. This is what needs to be followed. And in the V A would determine, you know, the, they would actually send the payment directly to my spouse if any of the money was determined to go to her. So they would, they would handle that all, and it's just being avoided.
Very good. Representative Horn, did you have a follow-up or you're good? I don't see, I don't see any other hand raised. So thank you, Mr. Sianzi.
Yes, sir.
Next on the list, I have Josh Warren. Is he here, Christina?
I will take a look here. Do not see him, though if he is here, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. I don't see anyone.
Okay, next I have David Newton.
Take a look. I do not see David Newton.
Okay, next I have Stephen Bowe there.
No one by the name of Stephen. Again, if any of you folks raise your hand. Okay, no one by the name of Stephen.
Okay, next I have Walt Pick.
I do not see Walt Pick.
Next I have Timothy Giordano.
I do not see Timothy Giordano.
Okay, next I have Granton Chapney.
I do not see Granton Chapney.
Next I have Derek Champagne.
Looks like Representative Rice was raising her hand physically.
Representative Rice? She's probably not able to unmute herself. Oh, there we go.
Thank you. So are we, if someone called in, what do they press to testify?
Star nine will raise their hand.
Star nine will?
Yeah, she's asking them if they're here to press star nine to show their hands. And she could, we could recognize them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Who's next?
I have Derek Champagne.
I do see Derek Champagne.
Okay, great.
Here we go.
Mr. Champagne?
There we go.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Good afternoon. I am retired Specialist Derek Champagne of the United States Army. I served proudly and honorably from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen, when I was medically retired. In two thousand and thirteen, I was on a tour in Afghanistan and was seriously injured in combat. I returned stateside and spent two years recovering in a Wounded Warrior Program in Fort Drum, New York. I will never be able to do certain things again after my accident. And I received a hundred percent disability and have been placed on the permanent total disability list. After returning home from recovering, a new battle presented itself. Outside of being a soldier, I'm a loving father to two beautiful girls, one of which I have fifty-fifty custody of. Unfortunately, the state of New Hampshire has been including my disability compensation in my child support calculations, leaving me struggling to pull myself out of the never-ending mountain of debt. This violates federal I M ninety-eight dash zero three, and I have been stripped of my right to due process to argue this clear violation. My inability to work and job limitations required me to collect social security to help pay my bills. I now receive four hundred and dol, four hundred and eleven dollars a month after one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars a month in child support is taken from me. My mortgage and truck payments are tripled this amount. Until this crippling and illegal action is stopped, myself as well as many other veterans will be forced to continue to choose between paying our bills and taking care of our children. So I ask people of the committee to please pass this. I've been fighting for years. And as far as veteran suicide, just last week, I had a father of five in my town that I live in commit suicide because he was denied access to his children, and he couldn't afford an attorney to fight for his kids. And this is a cold fact that a lot of veterans face, is yes, these programs are provided for low-income veterans. But when you have almost thirteen hundred dollars a month in your only income that you have taken out for child support in living, how are you going to be able to afford an attorney to represent yourself to make sure you're getting the time that you need with your children and the time that the children need with you? And that's all I have to say. If anyone has any questions, I am available to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Champagne. Does anybody have any questions? I don't see any hands up here. Thank, thank you, Mr. Champagne. Appreciate your testimony. Next, next on the list, I have Tim Penasak.
Just a moment, I did see him earlier. All right, here he is. Just one moment while we bring him over. Mr. Penasak, are you there?
I am. Thank you, Chairman Long, and thank you, the committee, for listening to my testimony. I also am a disabled veteran. And my disability is counted as a portion of, of child support. And I'm in the same situation as the other veterans. I want to point out a couple of things that came up in the testimony during the day so far. First of all, I M ninety, ninety-eight dash zero three is the information memorandum that falls underneath U S Code thirty-eight U S C five-three-oh-seven. So in the earlier testimony by Maura Ryan, she said it's an information memorandum. It is simply the process outlined by the Veterans Administration under the veteran, under the law, U S C fifty-three-oh-seven. I M ninety-eight oh-three is just the process. So there is a federal law calling for apportion, apportionment for the, for these funds. And as my other fellow veterans have stated, the state is not following that process. And Representative Horn made an earlier comment regarding, regarding the apportionment process. A lot of this alludes to H B three-sixty-two. I was present when the Casey Center presented the latest report. And there's a discussion, I know that this is, this is in, in research or in study regarding three-sixty-two. What we are asking as veterans is simply for the state to follow the federal guidelines and laws as it relates to our disability compensation. That's all we're asking is the state to do that. We're not asking to take money away. We're not, this money is not, a portion of this money is allocated. And you can pull, go to the V A website, and they actually have the schedule. And you can look to see how much compensation you get on what percentage. You can see how much money that if you have one child or two or three or four, I have four children. I have my children half the time. All that is public knowledge. And part of that money is allocated toward them, and the apportionment process allocates that money to those, for the children. Now, the question about how much of that gets allocated and split between both parents, if you have fifty-fifty custody, that's an issue that's in front of this committee regarding H B three-sixty-two. But the federal government is looking at this, the V A process is looking at this and saying, we will take care of the apportionment for the V A money. Now, I hate to say it, but they're doing a part of the responsibility that we're not doing in this state. And that's what three-sixty-two is about. So all we're asking as veterans who have served our country and have been injured is you just follow the law and follow the, follow V A law, that V A regulations, that's all. Happy to take questions from there.
Thank you, Mr. Penasak. Are there any questions? I, I don't see any questions. Thank you, Mr. Penasak. Next, I'll, John Brussels.
Happy to take a look. Looks like Representative Horn does have a question.
Representative Horn, you have a question?
I would like to offer two pieces of advice which may speed up this process. The first piece of advice is if Ms. Dyer is running from the same list that is in front of you, perhaps she can have the person speaking in the lobby and then bring the next person on the list who is speaking into the lobby and keep them muted so that we don't have to continually wait for somebody to search through a list. And the second piece is, I would really appreciate if our microphones were under our control because I think we're all able to decide whether or not we can mute or unmute ourselves. If a dog starts barking, sure, go ahead and mute somebody, but it's just very limiting, and I'm not very comfortable with it.
Okay, very good. Is Mr. Brussels available, Christina?
I do not see him.
Do not see him. Born Brookshaw?
You see Mr. Brookshaw? And he'll have to come in. Here we go, here he comes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Brookshaw.
How you doing?
Very good.
My name is Bjorn Brookshaw. I am an Afghanistan and Iraq war vet. In two thousand and seven, I was hit by a roadside bomb and shot twice. And I will tell you right now, lying dead on that ground is a cakewalk compared to what I'm going through right now with this, the child support custody guidelines. My daughter is seven years old. For the past five years, I have been treated like garbage. I have been looked down upon, and I've been refused to see my daughter. I make permanently and permanently disabled. I make thirty-two hundred dollars a month with, that's included my dependent for my daughter. I pay almost eight hundred dollars a month in child support, which includes medical, which includes inactivity, and food and clothing. Here, I can get Champ V A for my daughter, but my ex refuses, and she gets her own work insurance. I could, I've gone to the court numerous times in regards to this issue. And the judge looks at me, laughs at me, and says, well, figure something out. I have been homeless, and then I finally got on my feet and got a one-bedroom apartment where my daughter was able to come in and actually have a bed to sleep in. Well, my ex went to child services and stated- Well, my ex went to Child Services and stated that she didn't feel comfortable with just one bedroom. So I get one from an eight-hundred-dollar bedroom apartment to a twelve-hundred-dollar apartment. And now, if you think about it, eight hundred minus thirty-two is twenty-four- what, twenty-four hundred dollars, all right? Minus twelve hundred dollars, you're looking at another twelve hundred dollars left. Plus car fees, electric fees, food for my daughter, clothing that I have to pay even though it's included in child support. She- I have gone through the wringer with the courts. I've had lawyers take my money and run to try and help me gain this support from them. I am from Rhode Island originally. I moved up here when my ex was pregnant with my daughter, so we'd be in her family. I am the only person up here. I don't have friends up here. My family is not up here. The only people that I talk to are the veterans in this group, not here. I don't have support up here. Like, she lives at home with her parents. She pays rent-free. She has a car. She doesn't pay for food. She makes five thousand dollars a month, and yet we have fifty-fifty custody. This has killed me. It has hurt me mentally. I suffer from PTSD. I suffer from traumatic brain injury. I've had over ten surgeries. I can't work. I can't stand up for more than an hour without being in pain. And I've been- it's been used against me. The money I get from the VA limits to what I can do and supply for my daughter. My daughter, for Christmas, I went through Toys for Tots. And I- one thing that I heard through one of the testimonies this morning is that that one of the children get paid food at lunchtime at school. Well, my- I do that for my daughter at times. And that is actually something that helps us all. And to not recognize that is kind of frustrating because veterans like us need that stuff. And it's not a bad thing for kids to get it. It's actually a good thing. I have fifty-fifty custody. Yep. I maybe see my daughter ten percent of the time because of the fact that maybe I'm behind on child support. I'm behind on child support because I'm paying eight hundred dollars a month, and my bills are- I can't even cover my own bills. I- I put all my money towards my daughter. I didn't get a stimulus check this year because I'm behind on child support. And if you look at it, people that didn't get stimulus checks this year were people who were behind on child support. Felons got them, and people who were behind on child support. Good fathers who are there for the kids, can't afford to pay, and are late, no matter what they do, can't even get help out of the government. I try, and I am the best father that I could be. I am laughed at by the courts all the time. My judge was actually just retired, and she was forcibly retired because she was under investigation numerous times for false allegations and being biased against men. And when we brought this incident up about the child support payments and the VA benefits, she laughed at all about even my judge and said, "Well, you're gonna have to figure out a way to pay it because I don't care." Now, that to me is something that is not right. We keep fighting. I'm not gonna keep fighting, and it- something needs to be done. And I pray every day that I hope that this passes because not only will it stop suicidal fathers, but it will bring kids closer to their fathers. And fathers are just as important as mothers. Money involved, no money involved, it don't matter. Fathers play the biggest- one of the biggest roles in that kid's life. Daughters look up to fathers. Sons look up to fathers. And it's frustrating to go around and see that people who fought for their country are continually being looked down upon the courts. And it's all about money for their kids. It's all about money. You gotta pay this. You gotta pay this. And when you can't, you go to jail. You can't pay your child support, you go to jail. And as a veteran, that's not okay. When a mother refuses to see her or refuses to follow the parenting plan in court, or she gets a slap on the wrist, or the judge comes up with an excuse, "Oh, maybe because she was this way." But when we miss a day in child support or nothing else to support, you're behind, you go to jail. And somebody said it after, I believe it was at five thousand dollars, you can file federal charges on them. To me, that is not okay. When the government gives you only certain amount of money, and only two hundred dollars max for a child, and you have to pay almost three times, two times much as that, that's not okay. And it puts the father- and when the father can't pay it, and then he can't pay his rent, and then the other half ends up taking the child away because she doesn't feel comfortable because you can't find a place to live in. That's not okay. I am very frustrated. I am sorry that it's had to come to this. I wish we could all work together to resolve this. I am a very devoted father, devoted veteran, Purple Heart veteran, and it's something that I cherish. And I want my daughter to grow up knowing that her father did everything in his power to make sure she had everything that she needed to survive in this world. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brookshaw. No- no need to- no need to apologize either. I can understand your frustration. There are a couple of questions. Representative Rice, you got a question?
Thank you. It's- it's not really a question. I'm very sorry. But Representative Panis said he had to leave the meeting because he had Wi-Fi issues, and now he needs Christina to let him back in.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Representative Camerota. She can unmute herself a second.
I'm sorry. I'm looking for her. Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Brookshaw, for your testimony. I did not want to miss the opportunity to thank you and everyone that has come before us today as veterans for your service. And I just want to share that it- it is unacceptable that people such as yourself, who's trying to be a good dad, has to go through this. And I'm sorry that that's happening. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions? I don't see any here. Again, thank you, Mr. Brookshaw.
Thank you.
Next, I have Greg Federary.
Take a look. I do not see Greg.
Okay, then the last name that I have is Brenda Towne.
See Ms. Towne here.
She's there?
She is.
Okay, great.
Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for hearing us today. My name is Brenda Towne, and I represent a group of parents. So I unwittingly got involved in helping parents about a year and a half ago. And I- I guess I lead a group of about thirty-five hundred folks that participate on Facebook with me. And this past year, we decided to get- we decided to become unvirtual and meet for the first time. And we had about forty parents, fathers, a few mothers, but mostly fathers show up. And of the forty that showed up, I was shocked to find out that twenty of them were homeless, and the majority of them were veterans. And I- I had no idea what was happening. And so as I field phone calls daily and emails and messages, I became really familiar with what was happening to this group of parents. And what I came to find out is that these were disabled veterans. And instead of having their disability pay that was supposed to be separate, and it was separate based on the thirty-eight USC five-three-oh-one A-one and not included in child support calculations, without exception, all of them had had that happen to them while they were in family court. And so the child support orders that were being issued were on their disability. And if they worked, it would be a combination of their disability and their income. And it was creating a tremendous hardship and making it impossible for them to maintain an apartment and pay the support as well as keep up with their medications and other things that were built in their life. And what I really came to understand is it was preventing them from being the dads that they really wanted to be. When you're living in your car and you're financially strapped, you just can't be involved in your kid's life the way that you want to be. And so as the more I- I came to understand that we as a state were not following these federal guidelines, the more passionate I got about this, and I really wanted to get behind this bill, and I hope you all do too, because there is a very clear, defined federal process that we as a state have not been following. And this process was designed to protect this group of people because of situations that go way beyond the scope of what we would typically consider in family court. And there's a reason why our federal government created this separation of veterans' disability pay from other forms of compensation, and they kept it unique so that these men and women who served would be protected. And unfortunately, we have failed them, and we have failed them miserably. And as you heard from the testimonies today, this is a huge issue that we are responsible for fixing. So there is an apportionment process that is laid out, and people have talked about it today, the IM ninety-eight oh-three, that the Veterans Administration will administer. And based on an assessment, the households determine if some of that disability needs to be balanced in other households, and we need to let the VA do that. And by doing that, we help protect our veterans, and we also balance the household so both parents can participate to the level that they need to participate. The other thing that I really am concerned about as a New Hampshire resident is that because we have been not following these federal laws, we have inadvertently created an inappropriate matching of Title IV D funds that are being matched against these inflated child support orders. And that could put us in really hot water. And I wanted to flag that as well for the Family Committee because not only is this the federal law and the right thing to do, but by us not following it correctly, it exposes us as well. And so I think our hearts, based on everything I've heard from people around the room, we all want to support our vets. And so I just humbly ask you guys to institute the same federal guidelines that are out there to be executed and embedded in the language of our guidelines here in New Hampshire. And again, thank you very much, and I appreciate everything that you guys do. I know you hear a lot of stuff coming at you all the time, and it's a- it's a lot of work. But I appreciate that you're- you're listening today and that you stand in the gap to fix some of these holes for people that are hurting. And I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Towne. I have a question from Representative French.
Yes, thank you, Chair- Mr. Chair, and thank you for taking my phone- my questions. Brenda, I've heard the term and that there's an apportionment process repeatedly this afternoon. Moira Ryan was talking about she's been waiting ten years, and several of the men have mentioned this too. Is it a process that takes years?
In my narrow experience, it does not take years. And I believe some of the veterans who testified today might have seen other veterans go through the process. I believe in some of the documentation that is provided to the committee that they actually have examples of apportionments that went through the process and were closed in a timely manner. So that, you know, it was a horrible thing that- that has happened to that- the first person who testified today. And that shouldn't happen, but it is not, at least my experience or exposure. It should take about fifteen days once the VA receives the paperwork. That is what the commitment is on the bottom of the form that I have. Thank you.
Very good. I don't see any other hands up. So thank you, Ms. Towne.
Thank you.
Ms. Dyer, is there any other member of the public who would want- that hasn't testified? I- I have a phone call up here with somebody, a phone number. Would somebody's hands up?
So the only- there's nobody else on the list that I see that registered other than Mr. Tim Frazier from Child Support?
Okay.
And then if you wanted to-
Very good. We'll- we'll see. I- I see Mr. Kuning has his hands up. So I don't know if he needs to register or do I call upon some people? Why don't I call up Mr. Frazier from New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, Child Support? And then that's the last person I have listed. And we'll ask if any member of the public who hasn't spoke, speaking.
Here we go, Mr. Frazier.
Man, can you hear me?
He's muted. There he goes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Tim Frazier. I counsel with the Bureau of Child Support Services as part of DHHS. And I first want to thank Representative Baldassaro for his service and his advocacy for veterans and the veterans who have testified here today. But unfortunately, I do have to speak in opposition to this bill. It's really based on a basic misconception about federal law. And I'll try to tackle that first, which is concerning the apportionment process. The apportionment process that's contained in federal law concerning VA benefits does not modify child support. It is actually an enforcement tool. If I can explain, step back just a little bit. Federal law requires all forms of income to be included in the child support guidelines. That's a requirement of every state plan for child support in order for state 4D or child support agencies to receive federal funding. And New Hampshire does, in fact, define income, gross income, very broadly to conform to the federal requirements. It includes all forms of income, earned, unearned, wages, commissions, everything, tips, and all forms of government benefits as well too, including social security, unemployment compensation, and including veterans' benefits, including veterans' disability benefits. The reason for this is simple. It's a matter of public policy. When child support orders are determined, the court has to be able to look at the entire picture. It's got to be able to see exactly what it is and how all forms of income each party has, how they live, you know, what sources they have, and to be able to include that in the calculation of child support. Now, then, New Hampshire Supreme Court in Mr. Bronstein's case recently confirmed that the inclusion of VA benefits in the calculation of child support is consistent with federal law. It belongs there. It must be considered in the determination of an appropriate child support order. Now, VA disability benefits are a specially protected category of income. Now, VA disability benefits are a specially protected category of income, where almost everything else, wages, even disability benefits through Social Security, are assignable, not assignable, but they're attachable, garnishable by wage assignment, by child support, for the payment of child support. So if you're having ordinary income, or even if you're on Social Security disability, a notice will go to that source of income, and your child support will be paid through that garnishment. Federal law protects veterans' disability benefits in a special way. That is not allowed. That is to protect the veterans from creditors and others in a special way, federal law recognizing that this is special circumstances. These are disabled veterans. That doesn't change in any way the underlying child support order that has to be determined on a case-by-case basis. It only affects the way the child support order is enforced. Now, VA benefits do include allocations, generally include allocations for veterans' children, so those amounts are included in the the total award, and those are paid directly to the disabled veteran. Now, once those disability benefits have been paid to the veteran, the Bronstein case and other cases have confirmed that courts can require that child support be paid out of those funds, but they can't be directly garnished from the VA, except through the apportionment process. In cases where child support is not being paid, where the veteran is not adequately supporting their children, the VA said, that's an exception. Part of our of our mission here is to not only support the veteran, but also to support the veterans' families. There's the a door opens through the apportionment process where not the payer, but the payee can seek an apportionment of the VA disability benefits to gain access to what would otherwise not be directly garnishable. That is the apportionment process. It is not a redetermination of how much child support should be paid in any way. That is the court's job. The VA's job is to protect the veteran and to support the veteran and the family. So that is the basic misunderstanding that is a little bit confusing when you first look at this, but I do understand where the veterans are coming from. They see that there is an extra allocation for families in the veterans' disability benefits, and they're apparently thinking that by this apportionment process, that will limit their child support liability to that amount. But that is not the case. The informational memorandum, IM ninety-eight-oh-three, that keeps being referred to, that is actually a Federal Office of Child Support informational memorandum to four-D agencies, such as the Bureau of Child Support Services here in New Hampshire, describing how to access disability benefits being paid to veterans that wouldn't otherwise be accessible through this apportionment process. That is to help the payees who have a claim, like Ms. Ryan, I believe it was, who testified earlier, who is seeking to directly gain access to the veterans' disability benefits through this process. So unfortunately, this bill is based on a basic misunderstanding of apportionment and the federal law behind it. And the consequence of this would be to put the state out of federal compliance in regard to what has to be included in consideration of income for child support calculation purposes. And it really goes against the public policy of not only child support and the support of veterans' families, but also goes against the Veterans Administration policy of supporting both the veteran and their families, because if you take the amount of of the disability benefit out of the calculation, as we have heard, many of these disabled vets have little or no other income, that would result in a fifty-dollar-a-month minimum order of child support, and that would be the only obligation that would have to their families, no matter how many children. The inevitable result of that would be that the families would have less support, less ability to self, on self-reliance economically. They would be forced, in many instances, to seek public assistance and which the taxpayers have to pick up. That that's the unfortunate consequence of this. So I I respect the the efforts here. I understand this is very well-intentioned. It is just not what the sponsors and the supporters believe it is. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Here we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Are there any questions from the P? And I do have questions. Representative Penney-City.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Speaker if under Title IV, did the courts receive any extra funds based on the child support payments they received?
Not on the child support payments. Thank you for your question, Representative.
Thank you.
The the four-D funding is for the support of the four-D program, which is, in New Hampshire, the Bureau of Child Support Services. Every state, every territory, and most Indian tribes actually have four-D programs, because it's very much tied into the TANF program and so forth through reimbursement to the state and federal programs. The the federal government supports child support as sort of the keystone of that at a sixty-six percent rate. So are the Bureau of Child Support Services in New Hampshire does receive sixty-six percent of its funding from the federal sources. Now, also, one of the requirements of every state plan of child support is that child support cases get special treatment in court. They get what is called expedited process. In other words, it has to go faster than ordinary cases, because there are so many of them, basically, and they have to be done quickly. So in that expedited process, cases can't be heard by judges. They have to be heard by judicial referees or marital masters. And that cost for the judges, marital masters, and other court costs is sixty-six percent reimbursable through the four-D program in order to make it faster and support that court program. It has nothing to do with the amount of child support ordered, and as a matter of fact, what it has, the the orders have to be compliant with all four-D regulations. In other words, they can't be excessive or outside the guidelines. They have to be compliant with the guidelines in order to be consistent with the program and and receive the sixty-six percent funding. So yes and no. Courts do get reimbursed for four-D cases, but not for any particular orders.
Representative Corson, you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for taking the question, Mr. Frazier. Could you just explain again briefly how it is the present situation protects someone like Ms. Byer in her testimony? You mentioned that quite clearly, but I missed some of those details, and I'd be helped by that. Thank you.
Ms. Ryan is saying that as a disabled vet herself and and is seeking to enforce child support against another disabled vet.
Correct.
As the other parent. She is accessing the apportionment process, which is a request to the VA administration to actually have some or all of the child support that is that the other parent is obligated to pay taken out of their VA benefits directly. That is not otherwise available because of the way federal law works. You can't directly garnish those VA benefits, except through the apportionment process. Now, that apportionment process does not alter the underlying child support order. It doesn't limit the obligation of the veteran. It just is a determination by the Veterans Administration of how much can, if any, should be taken out of the veterans' disability benefits for the payment of support, based on the application of the payee, the one who is supposed to be getting the support.
And Representative Horn, you have a question?
So there's no doubt that this process is not serving everybody equally. We've heard plenty of testimony today that contributes to that that statement. What I'm curious about more than anything else is how DHHS justifies leveraging a disability check for somebody who's getting that check because they can't work, to the point where they're not able to provide a safe and stable environment for their, for the kids receiving the child support. Wouldn't it make more sense to keep that child support, wouldn't that be, make more sense to keep disability separate from child support dues so that the disability would be used to provide for the children?
Thank you, Representative Horn. That is really two separate issues. DHHS, the Bureau of Child Support Services, does not determine how much someone's child support obligation should be. That is the court's job. The Bureau of Child Support Services gets the orders and is obligated under the law to enforce to the best of our ability. Now, through that process, disability, ordinary Social Security disability, is garnishable by income assignment. Payment can come directly through the income assignment, but we can't determine whether that amount is fair or not to the person who is paying. That's the court's job. And so we don't, we enforce orders, we don't create them. The modification process is there for anybody who is not able to meet the payments. They can apply to the court to try to get their order changed. Again, that's a process that's out of our control, but we do assist people in it. If someone has a change of circumstance, or three years have gone by, they can simply ask us to help them get the case back into court. We do that.
Representative Rice? I'm sorry, Representative Horn has a follow-up. Go ahead, Representative Horn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought I heard you state when you began your testimony that you're in opposition to this bill, so wouldn't that suggest you're taking a position that you have just now tried to say is the court's position to take?
Thank you, Representative Horn. No, I I think I'm being consistent here. We have to oppose this bill because the change it would make to the child support guidelines would put us out of compliance with the requirements of our state plan. The state plan requires that all forms of income, earned, unearned, disability, and so on and so forth, be included in consideration by the courts in the child support guidelines. We don't, we don't issue orders. It's the court that issues the orders based on the child support guidelines.
Representative Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is actually for you. Do we have anyone here from the courts that could possibly answer some of these questions as to why we have veterans on the line who have put their lives on the line for our country and are homeless because of these guidelines? Where is the court? I want to hear from them. I'm sorry, I'm upset. This has been very trying to listen to.
Well, no need to apologize, Representative Rice. I don't see any, any member of the court system in the attendees' side. So unfortunately, we're, we don't have them representing, representing, wanted to be heard on this bill. Representative Marion, you had a question? Looks like he needs somebody to unmute him.
Thank you.
Representative Rice, yeah, I feel, I feel much the same way, but, and this is a, is a question to, to Mr. Frazier. When you, when you talk about the court and you talk about the plan, isn't it the legislature that actually determines that plan and what the court can and cannot do?
Thank you, Representative Marion, absolutely. And the, and the legislature has implemented the child support guidelines in compliance with the federal requirements. That's what the legislature has chosen to do, and part of that, of course, is to keep the state consistent with the requirements, the federal requirements of the state plan for child support. That is a prerequisite for the funding for both the child support, the Bureau of Child Support Services, and to a certain extent, to the TANF program. It's also reliant on compliance with the state plan for child support. So the legislature, past legislatures have made the decision that this is important and to have a functioning Bureau of Child Support Services that is funded by the the federal government. And like I said, that's the same nationally. Every state, every territory, and many tribal agencies, tribes have four-D agencies, and they all have to comply with the federal guidelines. If this bill were to pass, I would be back, or someone else would be back from child support next year requesting that this be changed so that we could be funded again.
Although, Representative Marion.
Yes. So there is a requirement every four years that the legislature review the child support guidelines and make appropriate modifications. And isn't that the purpose of what we had is HB three-sixty-two, which is now in interim study? So isn't that a place that we can address some of these issues, particularly those related to disabled veterans?
Absolutely. That is the idea for the periodic review. Every four years, there is to be a review of the child support guidelines, issues such as this, and the issue that keeps coming up throughout this discussion of shared parenting and how to provide for it within the guidelines. That's all part of the guidelines review and the subsequent recommendations and legislative action. That really is, we believe, the more appropriate forum for this kind of discussion.
Representative Horn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for taking my question again, sir. So I need some help with some of these definitions. What is the state plan, and what is its origin?
Thank you, Representative Horn. The state plan is from the Social Security Act Title IV-D. It includes the specific requirements that every state or territory or whatever entity has to put into place. It's a set of laws concerning child support, including the guidelines. It's a set of laws concerning child support, including the guidelines. Every, every 4D agency and, excuse me, back up one more. Every state has to have in place the state plan for child support in order to receive 4D funding. So as a 4D agency, as I was saying, we get our big amount of our funding through this federal funding because the state is in compliance with the state plan for child support. There's other state agencies that also have state plans that we have federal requirements. This is really no different except that the funding level is significantly higher than some of the other ones.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the origin of the plan that is specific to New Hampshire is the federal government or is the state legislature?
The state plan itself is dictated by the Social Security Act, federal law, and through related regulations. It is up to the state legislature then to, to have laws on the books on a state level to comply with those federal requirements. So that, that's the relationship between the two.
Representative Horn, follow-up?
Last one, Mr. Chairman, I promise. So the Fed gives us the skeleton under which we have to be compliant in order to receive federal funding. Putting meat and skin on that skeleton is the state's responsibility. So then, would that mean that, sorry, would that make this bill violate federal statute in which federal law, in which federal law would they be violating if we adopted this bill?
Well, I've included the specific citation in my, my written testimony, but it has to do with the, the federal regulations specific to child support guidelines, which require that all forms of income be included in consideration under the guidelines. And I, if you, I refer you to the Bronstein case issued by the Supreme Court in February of this year, where the Supreme Court looked at the child support guidelines and agreed that the inclusion of veterans disability benefits is consistent with those federal guidelines. And I believe the, the actual citation is 45 CFR 302.56C1. But that, that's included in my written testimony.
Very good. Representative DeSimone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Frazier, thank you for coming today to testify. But I, I do have a question insofar as the Supreme Court ruling. Supreme Court says every other court rule with the fact that they interpret the law, isn't that correct?
True, and the Supreme Court of New Hampshire's the last word on, on all form, on all determinations of what the law is in New Hampshire, except for constitutional issues that could be appealed to the Supreme Court.
Thank you. Follow-up, thank you. So isn't it true that this same issue could be fought in a court of law? And another judge may interpret the law in a different manner, therefore throwing this ruling out, isn't that correct?
This would require the New Hampshire Supreme Court to overturn itself. It would have to be another case, right? It, it's possible, sure.
So final follow-up, Mr.?
Follow-up, sure.
Thank you. So isn't it possible that if we were to pass this legislation, that the New Hampshire Supreme Court can in fact uphold this legislation due to its interpretation of both federal and state law?
Good. Thank you for the question, Representative DeSimone. And I don't think that the, this, if this law were passed, it wouldn't be in violation of any state law. What it would do is simply put the state out of compliance with the federal regulations concerning child support guidelines. That has implications for funding. And as I was saying here in my testimony, the real implication is that this could potentially lessen the amount of support for children, children of disabled veterans significantly and effectively impoverish them and require more public assistance. That's the real effect here.
Representative French?
Well, one final?
Okay, you have to unmute yourself, Representative DeSimone. Christina, can we unmute? There we go.
Okay, so if I may make one final comment in conjunction with Representative Marion's statement concerning House Bill 362. If we were to work on House Bill 362 to encompass some of what is going on in this bill as well, it's not going to impoverish children and it, it's only going to enhance the child support guidelines. And, and, and that's just my opinion, and I thank you.
Okay, Representative French?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Representative DeSimone covered what I was going to ask, so I will not ask a question.
Okay, very good. I don't see any other questions from the committee. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Frazier.
Thank you.
And Ms. Dyer, that, that is all I have that registered. Do you know of any other member of the public that is interested in testifying on House Bill 1760?
There are seven folks that are, that have their hands up, two of which, three of which have already testified. There are a few folks that are listed there if you wanted to recognize them. But to my knowledge, we don't have a registered email from them. But that's your call, of course.
Okay, so I have a Don Bolduc, is he available?
He is, here we go.
Mr. Bolduc?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, first of all, let me thank the committee for their time. I wasn't able to register because I just found out about this today. So I apologize for not following the procedure. Thank you, Al Baldassaro, sir, Representative, for putting this legislation forward. Clearly, some difficult decisions to be made. I'm 100% disabled veteran. I'm not affected in the same way the other veterans are. But I have been a veterans advocate for the last 31 months since my retirement from the US military. I've done this. I'm a national advocate, a state advocate. And our veterans are in a very serious situation here, as you, as you have heard. And the testimony about putting children at risk is also concerning. But I have talked to veterans under bridges. I've talked to them in homeless areas across this state. And I am very, very concerned that their disability pay would be considered as, you know, in, in the process. And, and I think that this is a, a, a bill that must be passed. It must be considered, and I am an advocate for it. And I am speaking to you as a veterans advocate and as a veteran and a retired military member and not in any other capacity. So thank you for your time. I hope that you pass this bill. And I am grateful to have the opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bolduc. Mr. Representative Carson, did you have a question to Mr. Bolduc?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Bolduc. The question is, do you know whether or not New Hampshire is an outlier across the country in terms of this situation arising within different states?
It is my understanding that this situation is experienced by veterans across the country. I wouldn't call it an outlier perhaps, but I believe that there are some things at the federal level that must be changed in order for the states to be able to do these things much more practically and take care of children and their veterans. But, so you will see this in other states, yes, sir.
Follow-up, Representative Carson?
Quickly, do you have any advice about how to do that from our point of view? How can we help?
Well, I think, you know, like I have done, contacting our congressional leadership in Washington DC. Of course, that hasn't been very effective for me. And I'm, I am pursuing another course of action to, to have an effect on that, as you're probably all aware. But really advocating to them, I've written to other veterans, I've written to the Veteran Affairs, and I've called the White House as well and, and, you know, discussed this with the White House as well to try and get these, you know, the, the federal, I don't call them loopholes, but gaps. President's doing excellent to support our veterans, but it falls inside a bureaucracy that has all these loopholes and gaps and things that they hadn't considered or things they didn't change. And so we find ourselves in that problem. So appealing to our federal representatives is how I'm trying to do it now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So seeing no more hands up, thank you, Mr. Bolduc?
You, you're welcome, sir.
Could we ask, Mr. Bolduc, if you have a moment to email your information to the HCS inbox, just to register?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, I had Senator Carson up here, but it doesn't look like she's here now. I have a Michael Quinn?
Okay, I'll bring Mr. Quinn on, just a moment. Mr. Quinn?
Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Quinn.
Hi, my name is Sergeant Quinn. I was just curious, a few things. 45 CFR 303 dot 11, case closure for criteria. The Title 4D agency can close a case when it has a medically verified total and permanent disability. And the, the state determines that the non-gestorial parent has no income or assets available that can be levied or attached for support. It also says further that non-gestorial parent's sole income, when proven to be SSI or SSDI, won't be attached, and the case will be a closed, closed. So I'm just curious why he didn't mention that in his, HSS didn't mention that part in his opposition. Also, SSI and SSDI from the Social Security Protection Act of 2004, Social Security Section 207, 42 USC 407A says that social security disability insurance and social security supplemental income won't be, shall not be transferred or signable at law or in equity. And none of the money paid or payable or rights existing under this title shall be subject to execution, levy, attachment, garnishment, or other legal process. Lastly, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around. They amended last year 11 USC 101, 10A, and they changed paragraph, sub-paragraph B to reflect that except any retired pay excluded under this subclause shall include retired pay under, shall include retired pay under Chapter 61 or Title 10 only to the extent that such retired pay exceeds the amount of retired pay to which the debtor would otherwise be entitled if retired under any provision of Title 10 other than Chapter 61. Not all military retirement is the same. And HSS is trying to, to kind of convince you of that fact that, that the retirement is all the same. Not every veteran serves 20 years. And so medical retirements, that's where that protection is for. That's why the apportionment should be done so that the secretary can determine whether or not the veteran served 20 years and is waiving a portion of his earned income retirement or if he is a disabled veteran who is unable to provide income for his dependent. When that's the case, they're entitled to social security disability insurance, at which point social security provides 55% to 56% of the awarded social security insurance via a schematic trust directly to the dependents. So the dependents are receiving 55% of that money directly paid to them through social security because they're indigent and unable to provide for their family. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Representative Rice, did you have a question? She needs to be unmuted, Christina?
Yeah, it's up to sometimes takes a moment.
Okay, I don't have a question for him. I need to talk to you for a second, Representative Long, because I received a message from Senator Carson who's hearing, who was supposed to introduce SB 295 at 2:00. She has to be on another call in four minutes. I also have members of my, of the Republican caucus side who have to leave for work shortly. So I don't know what we're going to be able to do, whether we call this question and vote on it or if we can recess and schedule another day because this has gone on now for almost three hours and we've gone way past the 2:00 hearing to which we have people waiting for.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, Representative Rice. I, I am, I wanted to give everybody the opportunity to speak. I didn't know if this was going to go three hours or two hours or five hours.
No, I understand, I understand that.
So I did see, I, actually, this is the last person. Mr. Quinn was the last person that I have on unless?
I apologize, Representative Long. We did have someone who did register while we were speaking again.
I know, but I thought, I thought, see, I knew that this was, I knew this was going to happen, that people are going to register while we're sitting here in a three-hour public hearing. And, and so now we have no idea how much longer this is going to go on. And I think it's, I think if anything, you need to at least recess this hearing. We can come back to it, but you have to get to SB 295, which you scheduled for 2:00. Because now we're making all those people sit and wait and, and they can't.
I, I understand that. Historically in a house, that has what happened. Plenty of times I had a scheduled meeting at 10 and waited till 2:00 in the afternoon to introduce a bill. I, I get that, I, I don't like that that happens, but that, that's out of my control. So we have one more, there, there's, there's other people with their hands up, but they've already testified. I'm, I'm not going to have them testify again. So we have one more and then we could close this hearing. And that is, I believe, is that Robert Thomas?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I'd just like to thank the panel for taking this last call. And I'm almost sitting here in tears. I've been listening to this testimony for the last three hours. I'm a combat veteran down here in Florida. This is a global issue, and I'll be brief. My brothers and sisters who have bear arms, I'm a former Ranger, combat veteran of Panama in the Gulf War era. And I battled the courts here in Florida for the last five years. I, I just want to simply say, Title 38 USC Code 5301 and 5307 was put in place for veterans like those that Ms. Rice's heart goes out to. Because I, I saw you, ma'am, I watched you. Others who are taking this adamantly and sincerely and understanding. Mr. Frazier takes a take on what the state allows to rip us off. Somewhere, people have forgot that federal funds, everybody sitting on this panel pay their taxes, and you pay for TANF, you pay for- their taxes, and you paid for TANF, you paid for me to be free today. And I'm talking about from expense of losing family, friends at war, coming back home. And as my brother Buckshaw stated, this is the worst battle I've had, to get home. Twenty-two years later, I went back to VA at twenty fifteen, and have only been receiving benefits after my children are grown. My fight has been with arrears through the child support system. The court system does not care to hear what veterans are saying. It is absurd. I am appalled that the people I went to die and fight for look at me like I'm nobody. When I've been a sergeant in the Army, I fought for you, I fought for my free liberties in this world, for as we speak today and how we stand and seek to call ourselves American. I applaud any child not being able to honor to have food on the table, clothing on their back, et cetera. But we don't know the intricacies of the personal allergy that happened in these families when they divorced. I've gone through divorce. I'm remarried today. But with that said, Title thirty-eight clears all that. Mr. Fraser wants to allude to the fact that the state federal government does not care about children, does not care about the the parent when it comes to child support. The law is written very simply, it's to recoup the funding of the federal expenditures through TANF that they have put out there. That's what Title IV D is for. It's not even a real court. But what they do is allude to the fact, they pad their pockets, there's a kitty called dispersment that the so-called judges getting paid from, the hearing officer gets paid from, nobody wants to talk about that story. Mr. Fraser want to make it seem like they're doing us some type of favor. But the federal government has already been very clear, Congress, May fifteen, twenty-seventeen, this is, you, I'm appalled, people don't, are not aware of this, if you guys will look it up, May fifteen, Howe versus Howe killed the Rose versus Rose case that these courts, local districts, have been using against veterans when we go before them to throw us off, say, no, we can use these monies. No, you can't use this money. It says very clearly, before, after, payments due to become due under the law administered by the secretary shall not be signable except to extent specifically authorized by law. And such payments made to or on account of a beneficiary shall be exempt from taxation, shall be exempt from claim of creditors, and shall be liable to attachment, levy, seizure, or any other legal or equitable process whatsoever, either before or after receipt of beneficiary. That's plain and gay. All we need to do at your level is implement what has already been written. Most recently, May fifteen, twenty seventeen, the Supreme Court affirmed all veteran benefits have been protected by thirty-eight USC fifty-three oh one, devastating the indirect challenges under property. States cannot, courts cannot vest that which under governed federal law they lack the authority to give. That clears up Mr. Fraser's story about his benefit that comes back from the federal funding, how they're padding their pockets, using our money, mind you, your money, because you pay me. You pay every veteran who receives this benefit. So what you would like to think is this, so the government take taxpayer dollars, pay a disabled veteran such as myself, and turn around and take the money to give someone an award for child support? That's counterproductive, and it also will leave me homeless or commit suicide. You can Google, all of you got your phones present, I'd like you to Google how many veterans are killing themselves daily that went through my war era, and maybe because of reasons such as this. I contemplated suicide several points to this process. Tired of fighting, I've been in that war, I made it back home safe. Twenty-two years later, my government now says, Mr. Thomas, we're going to help take care of you, and then I have to fight again. Out of a seventy percent award by the federal government, the court was asking for five hundred and seventy-one dollars for one child when all my other children was grown, out of fourteen hundred dollars a month. Please tell me, could anyone in this panel live off of the eight hundred dollar indifference if I had to pay the five seventy-one? And that money was exempt, has been exempt. It's been clear, there should not even be a discussion at legislative body in your state discussing what this is. What we need to do is simply implement the rules that's already there, thirty-eight USC fifty-three oh one, thirty-eight USC fifty-three oh seven, which is apportionment, which equates to garnishment. Okay, because in theory, what you would be simply saying is okay to take the federal government that is being given to me to take care of me, because I can't take care of myself. That's absurd, totally absurd. And to think that American soldiers, this what we went to fight for? Come back home and have to fight again? It's appalling. It is, it's acid nine, and soldiers are killing themselves, probably due to this cause. I'm talking to my friends and my brothers every day online throughout this country. This is not just a problem in New Hampshire, it's a problem throughout the country. The thing that gets me is the child support, Department of Revenue, here it sticks by the states, understand this, federal government program through Social Security, okay, allocated funds every year, being matched by what, the veterans' money that been given us by taxpayers? That's a ripoff. Somebody is doing an injustice, much less with the taxpayer dollar, but they also turn around and taking it back and padding their own pockets, because if through dispersment, that so-called judge that's sitting there, that's a fake judge, not a title.
Mr. Thomas, you're getting, you're getting a little off course. Mr. Thomas, we're, we're here on House Bill seventeen sixteen, you're getting a little off course now.
I apologize, I'm emotional, but.
No need to apologize, just.
Here's a cut through. Title thirty-eight already secures the veteran's benefit.
Very good.
Okay, Congress, Supreme Court ruling, May fifteen, twenty seventeen, already took the powers from these courts to do what they're doing to veterans. The proper protocol, when it comes, there's a guideline, very simply says, when a veteran comes before the court, there's four simpler rules. First, you decide, is your veteran, my ED two fourteen proves that, does I receive any benefit from the government, there's my award letter, and then it also tells you the portion that there's that, that goes off the table, can't be used for numeration of income. Mr. Fraser would like to allude to that in the numeration in the CFR forty-five, it would stipulate that veteran's disability compensation is part of that award. No, it is not. It can't be utilized. It's a play on words. The other thing that I'm, like my brothers if they're listening, all you need to please stop calling what you receive as income, because it's not income. It's disability compensation. It's a term used for the practice. Look up Blacks Law, I don't work, so I'm not.
Again, could, could, could we get back on the subject matter, which is House Bill seventeen sixteen?
Yes, sir.
This is what we're hearing.
I would say it should be mandated by your state and your legislative body to, everybody read thirty-eight USC fifty-three oh one.
Yes, we heard that through everybody's testimony. Yep.
Yes, and then also, just go look at the Supreme Court ruling of May fifteen, twenty-seventeen. This has already been done.
Thank you.
It's already been done, because the courts need to start following it at the state local level.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Do we, the panel, committee have any questions for Mr. Thomas? Seeing none?
Please have.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
So I don't see any other attendees wanting to testify, Christina?
No, one has already testified, and one is an unidentified number.
Okay, very good. So at this time, I'll close, I'll close the hearing on House Bill seventeen sixteen, and we'll open, we'll open the hearing on Senate Bill two ninety-five, and I'll call on, I'll call on Cameron Lepine.
Yes, I do see that Representative Rice has her hand up, if you want to recognize her, if you wanted to go.
Senator Rice? No, she's.
Put it down, okay.
So hearing on Senate Bill two ninety-five. Ms. Lepine?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Hi, this is Cameron Lepine. I am the legislative aide assigned to Senator Carson. Senator Carson had to hop on another call at this point and asked me to introduce Senate Bill two ninety-five FN on her behalf. This bill recodifies the statutes governing the Office of the Child Advocate, clarified the authority and independence of the office, and expands the jurisdiction of the office to include a broader range of agencies that serve children. This bill also establishes an Oversight Commission on Children's Services. I respectfully refer any questions to people who will testify after me. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Lepine. I, I, I don't have that list.
More than happy to help out.
Yeah, I know you emailed it to me, I'd have to look it up again.
That's all right.
I've got two hundred emails since then.
Yes, let's take a look. I do have Ken Norton from NAMI, New Hampshire.
Chair recognizes Mr. Norton?
See if I can, if he's still on. Yep, there he is.
Oh, there we go.
Hello?
Yep, Mr. Norton, you're, we can hear you.
I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
I can no longer hear you. Maybe that's what it is.
Okay, that's what it is, because we could certainly.
If you can hear me, just nod, and I'll go ahead and give my testimony. Okay. Thank you, Chairman Long, committee members. My name is Ken Norton, I'm the Executive Director of NAMI, New Hampshire, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. I'm also a former foster parent, and I'm an adoptive parent through DCYF, and I'm a licensed independent clinical social worker in New Hampshire, and I'm here to strongly support Senate Bill two ninety-five. The, during the short tenure of the Office of Child Advocate, they've really demonstrated a level of independence and integrity and transparency to hold us all as a state collectively accountable for making needed improvements in our child protective and juvenile justice system. The, and based on my own personal and professional experience, I think that the, that our families and vulnerable children often don't operate in isolation to specific systems, and many kids and families are caught in gaps and barriers between systems. And we see that all the time at NAMI, New Hampshire, through our information resource line and some of the work that we do with families. And I think that it's not just children and families that get caught, it is some of our really knowledgeable and effective and caring service providers, or they're unable to proceed with what would be most helpful for a vulnerable child and family because of these systems, barriers, and gaps. And we've seen firsthand, I've seen firsthand the effectiveness of the Office of Child Advocate to investigate, assess, and make recommendations relative to promoting cross-systems collaboration and resolution on challenging issues that are faced by children and families. And I believe that expanding the reach of the Office of Child Advocate as included in this law to include suicide and psychological injury and risk and other critical incidents that are listed in the, in the bill, many with, you know, with certainly mental health impacts and trauma with them, and, and will be really helpful. I also believe it's consistent with the goals of the Ten Year Mental Health Plan from January twenty nineteen, and specifically, the, the recommendations relative to coordinated continuum of care. And, and that particular part of the plan talks about the integration of the Department of Health and Human Services and other state agencies, the system of care, the Governor's Commission on Alcohol, School Safety Preparedness, and, and other things. And I think that the Office of Child Advocate would be very helpful in, in bringing those different systems together and providing that level of accountability and, and connection that is, is needed. And then, lastly, I would just say that I think it's particularly important as we look toward the, the vulnerability of children and family relative to the COVID environment that we're in, and the budget pressures that are sure to follow, and certainly are going to have severe impacts on our children and families. So NAMI, New Hampshire strongly believes this legislation can dramatically improve the safety net for children and families in New Hampshire, and I thank you for your time, and I would take questions, but I'm not sure if I can hear you.
Can you, can you hear me, Mr. Norton? He can't hear for some reason, so, well, I know Representative Carter's had a question, but he's not able to hear us.
That's okay, my question was just for the first speaker to repeat their name, so I could have it for the record.
Oh, Ken Norton.
No, the prior one. Who introduced.
That was, that was staff.
Cameron Lepine.
Cameron Lepine.
Cameron Lepine, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I only see one other hand, one other hand up to testify, and that's Representative Horgan?
No, we have three others that, that registered.
Okay, is Representative Horgan?
He did, I believe he may have later on.
Okay, I just got wiped out here, so I don't, okay, so.
I do have a James Buffetti.
I do have a James Buffetti, Associate AG, Department of Justice. Mr. Buffetti? I don't have no members of public listed to testify on this.
Oh, no.
Okay. Good, Mr. Buffetti?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is James Buffetti, I'm an Associate Attorney General, and so I'm hoping that the letter that we sent in on February to the chairman has made its way to the committee. It highlights the concerns that the Department of Justice has with this legislation. I'm testifying in opposition, but I don't want that to detract in any way from the important and critical work that the Office of the Child Advocate does every day, and we support that. There are, there is some language in that bill that creates some significant concern having to do with accountability and oversight. So primarily, there's language in the bill that says, "The office shall, notwithstanding any other provision of law, operate with full independence from any state official, department, or agency in the performance of its duties." That language, as, if properly understood, would remove any accountability and oversight for the child advocate, even from the governor and the Attorney General. As, as you know, under our system, executive power is vested in the governor, who was elected by the people to, to faith, to make sure that the laws are faithfully executed. This agency is an executive branch agency. In addition, the Attorney General is the chief law enforcement officer and has statutory authority to make sure that all executive branch agencies and officers perform their duties according to the law. That's very important, to make sure that we continue to be in compliance with the law, that we, we, that we minimize litigation risks against the state, and, and finally, judges and courts are charged with resolving disputes. But if you read that language literally, it's suggesting that the Office of Child Advocate would be exempt from those provisions of law, from the executive branch, from the Attorney Generals, and from the courts, which is fundamental to our system of government. So we have been raising this issue for quite a while now, since two thousand and nineteen, when this bill was first brought forward in the, in the Senate. In a sense, this language would create the Office of Child Advocate as an unaccountable fourth branch of government, and raises concerns, I think there are ways, there is language that we can make sure that that office is independent and can do the critical work that it has to do without, at the same time, in putting into a statute, language that is contrary to the Constitution and contrary to concepts of good government. There are other issues that are in the letter that I hope that you'll have a chance to look at. The bill does entrust the Office of Child Advocate with broad and unfettered discretion to, for example, investigate the actions of any agency, any agency in the state, investigate and issue subpoenas relating to any media report of a child, that's the standard. If, if there was a media report regarding a child, the, this bill would give the child advocate the authority to issue subpoenas. And finally, we raise an issue about access to autopsy reports, and in some cases, autopsy reports that involve homicides. And the problem with the language is that the, that the bill would permit the Office of Child Advocate to disclose confidential information contained in a homicide autopsy report without any check by the Department of Justice. That provision has the potential to jeopardize sensitive criminal investigations, and in fact, could impinge on a defendant's right to a fair trial. That's my testimony, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Attorney Buffetti. Are there any questions? I don't see any questions from the committee. I do, Representative Jarius?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't digitally raise my hand fast enough. Um, thank you for taking my question, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering, so is there, the language that you were concerned about at the beginning about you said almost establishing a, a fourth branch of government, is that something that you see could be remedied by moderately simple amendment? Is there a simple language change that you would see that could make it so that we're not, that there's still some independence, but it's not completely unaccountable to any branch of government?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure there's ways of doing that. And, you know, we've, we've, I don't have language today to propose, but I, I think if the intent is that we want this office to be independent in that it can investigate state agencies, for instance, DCYF, if there's an issue. And that's what, that's what this office is doing so well now, that they should be able to do that and have the independence to do that. This language simply goes too far because of the reasons that I stated before.
Thank you.
Representative Barian? Actually, Representative Barian, you're a sponsor, co-sponsor on this bill, are you?
I just, I'm just, point of information. I haven't seen, I haven't seen the letter. Has that been distributed?
Well, that's the question I was going to ask him, once the committee had all questioned out and we have. So, Mr. Buffetti, you said that I received the letter in February?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I mailed it in February, February 27th, it's dated. But when I responded, requested to testify to, to this hearing today, I also attached it to the email that I sent. So it should be there. If not, I'm, I'm happy to resend it to you.
Okay, uh, so you emailed it to the committee or?
Uh, so there was an email address that I, that I needed to respond to in order to officially request to testify today.
Yeah, yeah.
And I attached it as a...
HTS? Okay, so they could, they could get that letter out to us. Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Actually, Representative Horn has a question. Representative Horn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for taking my question, sir. Has there been any difficulties with the AG and the Office of the Child Advocate exchanging information?
Uh, well, we've, we, we actually represent the Office of Child Advocate. So we have an attorney here who works closely with the office. So the information wouldn't be exchanged between us and, and the office. Usually the information that she's looking for would be information from DCYF and from other social agencies. I don't think there's been a problem. I do think that, that there may be cases where we need to provide legal guidance. We're, we're obligated to do that with not only that executive agency, but every agency. So we provide attorneys who are essentially client counselors who work with agencies to make sure that the agencies are complying with law. And so issues come up about right to know questions and personnel issues and other issues that we will work with all our clients with to make sure that we are minimizing risk of litigation. We would do the same thing with the Office of Child Advocate as we would do with every other state agency.
Uh, follow-up, Representative?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm reminded of the passage in the Bible that says, "A man cannot serve two masters." And I'm wondering if there are situations where there would be a conflict of interest where the Office of the Child Advocate is asking questions of DCYF, but because they're in the Office of the Attorney General, they can, DCYF can claim client privilege against answering them because they're being represented by DCYF, by AG attorneys.
So we, we oftentimes have, have clients on different sides of, of issues. We would have a separate attorney who would be working with the Office of Child Advocate from attorneys that would be working with the Department of Health and Human Services and DCYF. So we, because we're called on to represent every state agency, we would, we would separate out lawyers who could represent the, and will represent the Office of Child Advocate. They will not be involved with representing DCYF.
Uh, so Representative, another follow-up, Representative Horn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about that. So even if we move the Office of the Child Advocate out from underneath the Attorney General's office, you would continue to represent them as they're an executive branch office? The bill wouldn't, this bill wouldn't change that situation?
Thank you for your question, Representative. Actually, the Office of Child Advocate is not a part of the Attorney General's office. So if I was, I was understood to, to say that, I, I apologize, that's not what I was saying. What I was saying is that every state, every executive branch agency is, is supervised by statute, by law, by the Attorney General to make sure that they're performing their duties according to the law. So every agency, meaning the, the Department of Safety and the Department of Transportation, the Office of Child Advocate, we, we work with every agency to make sure that they are complying with the law. But, but, but the Office of Child Advocate is not a part of the Department of Justice in, in the sense that I think you meant it.
Representative Camerota?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Attorney Buffetti. I have seen the, in the past, last year, the ability of committees in an office like Child Advocate, having the authority to do subpoenas when necessary. Do, do they come to the Attorney General's office to ask for counsel on such things or do they, are they able to work within the law to determine the appropriateness of that?
So the statute doesn't require them to come to us. They certainly can, and a lot of state agencies who have subpoena power that's given by the legislature will want to consult with us because sometimes legal issues come up. But they're not required to do so and, but we are certainly here to assist the Office of Child Advocate if they have questions like that and want, want us to, to help them with it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Representative Yocella?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for taking my question. So you have multiple attorneys that will be able to represent each side without having a conflict? And is it also your position that you have no oversight role currently on the Office of the Child Advocate?
No, in fact, so, no, in fact, if you, if you look at RSA 21:3B, that's the statute that says that the Attorney General has the authority to ensure that all executive branch agencies and offices perform their duties according to the law. So it's from that, from that perspective, by law, that we are supposed to, that is what we're supposed to be doing here, provide guidance because a part of it is to avoid problems. You know, we, we, we work with clients to, to minimize litigation risks. You know, this office especially is dealing with high-profile, very difficult cases. And so we want to make sure that we minimize any litigation risk for the state in all agencies. And we do that by being proactive with attorneys who are client, act as client counselors for the state agencies. And we regularly interact with them on a daily basis to make sure that we answer their questions and assist them. And then if the state gets sued, then we would represent the state in defending those actions. So, but, but the goal is to prevent the state from getting sued in the first instance. And we do that by exercising the statutory obligation that we have.
Uh, very good. Representative Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much for taking my question. I'm, I'm harking back to the very beginning of your testimony when you said, you expressed your concern with the language on page two, lines 25 and 26. "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, they shall operate with full independence from any state official or agency." I read that as meaning independence, but was I understanding you to say that you are interpreting that to actually put this office above the law? Because that's not the way it reads to me.
Uh, so, yes. The, the concern is that, again, "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, operate with full independence from any state official, including the governor and the attorney general, any state department or agency in the performance of its duties." So where is the accountability? I mean, we're all accountable to somebody ultimately. So where is the accountability? If it's an executive agency, accountability is to the governor and to the attorney general.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, follow-up?
Thank you, sir, and thank you again for taking my second question. But my understanding, i- is it not true that if we remove that, then it's not only accountability that we're removing? And, and as I read it, you still have accountability, but if you remove that language, then either the Attorney General's office or the governor can simply tell the Office of Child Advocate what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. And the point here is to have somebody who is independent of that, uh, political influence, but certainly not above the law.
But I think that's just the point, Representative. I think that it, it has the potential of being interpreted as putting this office above the law. Because it's not only the Attorney General and the governor, but the courts. If they're completely independent from any state official, meaning a judge, then again, we need to have accountability and oversight of, of executive agencies, which means that we need to let them do their work. But, but our system of government is a system of accountability and checks and balances and, and we have to have a way to say, "You're an executive branch official and as all executive branch officials," then the executive power of the, of the state government is vested in the governor, who is elected by the people and charged with the faithful execution of laws.
Okay, thank you. Would you be willing to provide some alternative language that you're more comfortable with that preserves what you think needs to be preserved while preserving to the maximum extent possible the independence of this agency?
I, I'd be happy to work with, and we've offered this along the way, offered to, I'm happy to work with the committee, with the Office of Child Advocate, to see if we can find language that, that addresses the independence that they clearly need to do their job, but doesn't create a fourth branch of government.
Thank you.
Oh, very good. Any, I don't see any other questions from the committee. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
And I believe the final person requesting to testify is Maru O'Neil.
We have Maru O'Neil and we also have John DeJoy from Wakepoint.
Okay.
So were you recognizing?
Ms. O'Neil? Yes.
Here we go.
She's muted right now. Oh, there we, oh, you had her for a minute. She's still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Long and Vice Chair Barian. Thank you so much for giving your time to send a bill 295 relative to the Office of the Child Advocate this afternoon, and congratulations on managing through the technology for this sort of historical day of hearings. It's great to be a part of it. I want to thank Senator Carson, Representative Rice and Representative Barian, who are co-sponsors on this bill. I'll try to be a brief, you have my written testimony, but I'll focus essentially on the two major adjustments that Senate Bill 295 does for the Child Advocate statute, which are to make services comprehensive and equitably accessible for children and also to clarify the independence, as you've just heard some discussion already. And I'll also point out, thanks to Ken Norton, who mentioned the impending pressures of COVID-19 and the budget issues that we see ahead. And remind you that the very existence of the Office of the Child Advocate was born out of a period of austere budget actions that resulted in really untenable tragedy. So it's taken us a decade to get New Hampshire back on track in just building an infrastructure for supporting children. So the role of the Office of the Child Advocate is very important. So the two main adjustments that we're seeing, first, the expanding services for the Office of the Child Advocate. The, the crafters of the founding legislation to establish this office looked to Massachusetts for a model, but they stopped short at endowing the office with the breadth of jurisdiction that Massachusetts has. And my understanding is that they anticipated a phased approach in order to avoid overwhelming a brand-new office facing a child welfare system in crisis. The current Massachusetts child advocate, Maria Mosades, explained why broad jurisdiction is important to us recently. She said, and I quote, "Children and their families require support from a wide range of state services, including education, in order to grow into a healthy adulthood." So in Massachusetts, the OCA is the only agency that looks across all state services to identify the gaps and opportunities to ensure that children have what they need to thrive. So I, I reminded that, and we should all be reminded, that the office actually has no enforcement authority. The only power and means of being effective is in access to information and the privilege to review that information to better inform all of the parties involved with helping a child. So expanding the jurisdiction is really only expanding access to children's stories. Often, the points of intersection where state systems meet are where children's needs are most effective. So the Connecticut child advocate, Sarah Egan, also echoed what Mosades had, had pointed out, which is, quote, "Having access to information across state systems that serve children is absolutely essential to understanding how vulnerable children's needs are met or not through state-funded services." So virtually every report the Office of the Child Advocate in Connecticut does, including fatality investigations, looks across systems so that they can truly understand how children's health, safety and welfare are supported and protected. So both of those advocates are pointing out a fundamentally important view of the functions of these offices. They're describing not how well agencies are functioning, they're describing how well children are served. So if children are served by more than one agency, we can't fully understand where the gaps are if we only examine a single agency's involvement. And Egan in Connecticut provided a really good and, and sad example of a child fatality in Connecticut involving a child who had autism, intellectual disability, was chronically missing from school and was subject of a neglect petition prior to his death. So he was known by the school system, the courts, the legal system, the health providers and child protection as a child who needed help and protection. By accessing information across all those involved state-funded systems, the Connecticut OCA was able to see the gaps and how they contributed to the circumstances that led to that boy's death. And I've given you a citation and a link to the report on that child's death. So this example is one that's consistent with actually the findings and recommendations of all of our reports to date that show the necessity for interprofessional understanding and communication across all entities serving children so as best to meet their needs. So expanding the office, office's jurisdiction to cover all state services provided to children, it's fair, it's thorough, it's efficient and it's forward-thinking. Because right now, state and federal initiatives are shifting emphasis from responding to child abuse to preventing it. So the heft of state investments is right now moving upstream and it makes more sense to have this independent eye on the development and the implementation of programs intended to be responsive to children's needs. We know that few children start out in the care and supervision of DCYF and we need to be able to help before they get to that point and to monitor and support DCYF when they do. So through access to information, the Office of the Child Advocate is able to inform the development and implementation of policy and practice as... the development and implementation of policy and practice as it's experienced by children and families themselves. It's been really valuable when we've had the opportunity to provide information in that way. This is a really powerful feedback loop for ensuring the best interests of children are served. And we've also seen in the COVID-19 pandemic that underscores the need for an expanded ability to help children, because right now, under the current statute, we're able to assess the care of only 10 children in residential care who are COVID-19 positive infected. And in my written testimony, I note that it's eight, but it's actually 10 that we know about at this point. We know that there are actually more children than 10 who have the COVID-19 infection, but because they were placed in residential programs by their schools, we don't have access to their records, and we can't help them or advocate for them. Similarly, as Ken Norton had suggested, when a parent calls us desperate for mental health services, we're going to do our best to provide information to them, but we can't, unless they're involved with DCYF, we can't examine where's the child coming from, what's been tried, what's going on at schools, what developmental services are they receiving in order to identify those gaps that will help rectify the distress that both the parent and the child have reached at the point that they've contacted us. So expanding jurisdiction would allow us to assist families before abuse, before neglect, before delinquency occurs. Then the independent issue that you were just hearing about from Mr. Buffetti, Senate Bill 295 clarifies the office's independence. So currently, the statute reads that the office shall be an independent agency. So independence is just assumed. It's essential to the credibility of the office. In order to enjoy the trust with citizens, it must be free from undue influence and conflict of interest, or even the appearance of that. This key ingredient to credibility has been questioned in several ways, and you've just heard some of those questions. So first, the independence of the office was called into question due to an appearance that it's part of the Department of Health and Human Services. In other words, we are part of the problem. And that perception is remedied by moving the office to its own statute. Now, the enabling statute was legislated in a budget bill, and because of that, the language wasn't thorough. So there are no definitions, for example. So the definitions clarify the role, scope, and authority of the office. And Senate Bill 295 includes a full list of responsive definitions, including definitions of critical incidents, and the critical incidents that the department is required already to report to us about actually includes, by DCYF definitions, media reports. So they're not media reports about any child, but they're media reports that DCYF is looking at because a child is injured or there's a child fatality, and that's in the news, and there's a concern about that in terms of child protection and child welfare. Because when a child is in the news, there can be very negative repercussions on that child's life and experience and their siblings or any other children who are involved. And that is explained in the section, the definitions. There's also been challenges to the office's independence in relation to the Office of the Attorney General. And while we have confidence and have been informed that the Attorney General takes every measure to separate representation of state agencies, as Mr. Buffetti has just explained, the perception of a conflict persists. And Representative Horn's biblical reference to a man serving two masters is implicated here. So despite the Attorney General's effort to separate interests, the Attorney General is inherently embedded in DCYF by its involvement in supervising, training, and supporting DCYF attorneys, conducting RSA 126U investigations of children in DCYF custody when they are seriously injured or killed during a restraint, they participate in DCYF special case reviews, and they also participate in many DCYF operational meetings. It's very rare that we attend meetings with DCYF that the Attorney General is not represented. The remedy to the appearance or perception of compromised independence borrows language from other states' offices of the child advocates. So that line 25 in SB 295 that proposes the language, notwithstanding any other provision of the law, operate with full independence from any state official, department, or agency in the performance of its duties, is language that is taken from other offices, including Connecticut, which has been in existence for over 25 years, Rhode Island, I think, has been in existence for about 35 years, Massachusetts as well, and we give you the citations to those laws. This language separates the office from any other agency, including the Attorney General, so long as its agents operate in compliance with the law. So Mr. Buffetti's concerns that the office would be exempt from provisions of law are in this way unfounded. Any deviation from lawful performance of duties would warrant usual oversight of the Attorney General, the governor, any member of the executive council, or the Oversight Commission on Children's Services. So I've addressed some of the issues that Mr. Buffetti's mentioned. I want to point out criminal acts do not fall within the lawful performance of duties in the Office of the Child Advocate. Another concern of his expresses that the office would operate without any oversight. In fact, Senate Bill 295 recodifies the Oversight Commission on Children's Services that's currently operating under RSA 170G19. It's a multidisciplinary commission with representation from all branches of government. The Oversight Commission provides oversight of the Office of the Child Advocate. Furthermore, the director is appointed by the governor for a time-limited appointment. The time limit is viewed as a protection against overreach. But ultimately, RSA Chapter 41 empowers the Attorney General, the governor, any member of the executive council, or the appointing authority for that official to petition the governor and council to remove the director for cause. These are very clear and effective mechanisms of oversight designed to endorse confidence in prevention of corruption or unlawful behavior, but also assuring the independence necessary for an effective voice on behalf of children. As the first director of the Office of the Child Advocate, I really feel the weight of ensuring the office is well-grounded and able to function as the legislature envisioned for the long run as an independent agency. Senate Bill 295 refines and positions the office for independence, for impartiality, for credibility, and for privilege to access that necessary information to make a difference in how effectively children are served by the state of New Hampshire. There are other small adjustments in the current statute. I want to especially call your attention to the Senate amendment that removed the fiscal note on this bill. And then just a couple of quick comments on a couple of other things that came up in Mr. Buffetti's testimony. His reference to the Office of the Child Advocate having the authority to investigate any agency. It's the Office of the Child Advocate, and in the definitions and in the main statute, this is referring to any agency that serves children. And it wouldn't be in the normal performance of duties, for example, that the child advocate would investigate some state agency that doesn't serve children at all. That wouldn't make any sense. It is definitely limited to the agencies that are serving children. And generally, what prompts this authority is when there are complaints received or the child advocate identifies where children are not served properly. I've already explained to you about the media reports, and then I'll stop here and take any other questions that you might have. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Representative French, you have a question?
Yes, I would thank you for allowing me to ask a question, Chair. And Dr. O'Neill, thank you for taking my question. I understood you to say that the fiscal note has been removed by the Senate?
Yes, thank you for that question. The fiscal note attached was the need for additional positions, and in the last session, both the Senate and the House made accommodations for two new positions in the office. So we are fully staffed, or we are situated to be fully staffed, so it's not necessary, and it was removed when it was instead of judiciary.
Thank you.
Representative Horn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for coming to give your testimony. It's always enjoyable to listen to the source of expertise. My question concerns the Oversight Committee establishing, by my count, 18 separate people who would be appointed by various authorities to impanel this Oversight Commission. Do you have any concerns about, A, 18 people, or B, the quorum requirement to be nine people?
Thank you for that question. I hadn't really given thought to concerns about quorum, because generally, the Oversight Commission meetings are well-attended. And it is actually enlarged in Senate Bill 295 because it's made room for two new positions, one being a foster parent and one being someone who has, in their past, received services as a child from DCYF. We agreed with Senator Carson that that was important, that people who are consumers of DCYF services and state services in general could really give us good guidance from the Oversight Commission. So I think that New Hampshire generally tends to have very large committees anyhow. It includes a lot of folks, and so we're sort of used to that. I don't think 18 is ungainly, and we always really appreciate very, very substantive feedback from the Oversight Commission on the work that we do. I regret that it's a public committee and it's not a commission, and it's not something that acts more as an advisory panel, because I think we could benefit from that a little bit more in having private conversations. But we have found the Oversight Commission to be really useful, and we've had good feedback about our ability to take guidance and instruction from them as well. Thank you.
Very good. Seeing no more questions. Thank you, Dr. O'Neill.
Thank you.
I have two more people to speak. I'll call next up John DeJoy.
Just a moment, get him up here.
Oh, there you are.
There we go. Mr. Joy.
And I assume people can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And members of the committee, I'm going to do my best to be brief. I appreciate your perseverance through this afternoon. I can see a lot of tired faces, and I don't want to do anything to add to that. You have my testimony. I will try to excerpt it as I go through it. And I always hate when I have to follow Dr. O'Neill with her testimony, because she ends up stealing most of my testimony. And yet again, today, she has taken most of my testimony, and I'll try to skip those parts. Just one clarification in terms of the fiscal note. The fiscal note, the Senate cannot remove the fiscal note. There is still a fiscal note, but it has no application now. As she pointed out, it was a request for two positions that were approved through the budget, and so there is no reference to any need for financing in the bill, and we expect finance would decline to take this bill to the committee. The second point I would make is that this originally was a standalone bill several years ago, and was only, this committee heard the bill, and it was only combined with the budget after the Policy Committee had acted on the policy and forwarded it. So the reason it may not be as robust in the current language has more to do with my shortcomings than it does with the shortcomings of the legislative process. So most of you are aware of this, most of you have been dealing with this for a number of years and are aware this committee approved the bill three years ago, thus creating the Office of the Child Advocate. When I brought this language to you three years ago, I made a statement such to the effect that we were providing a very limited scope of oversight, so as not to overwhelm the office, but we fully expected we would be back asking for expanded oversight as it was warranted. And that's really what this bill does today before you. In the main, it expands the scope of the office beyond DCYF, which is primarily where the scope has been for the last three years. The expanded scope will include, as Dr. O'Neill said, child-serving agencies, but it'll also include contract services, and most particularly, will include DOE. There are a number of schools that provide services, and schools are far beyond the oversight of the office. And in fact, what we should permit and expect the office to do is follow the data where it leads, not be stopped at a border of an agency when data suggests that there may be some reason to take a look at that agency. We should allow the data to speak to the office and follow the data where it leads. So just very briefly, some history for folks who were not on the committee three years ago, who were not involved in this legislation several years ago. This office really had its beginnings after the Great Recession back in 2009, 2010. At that point, we had significant budget shortfalls. Budget cuts were made across the board, and few of any agencies were unaffected by those budget cuts. DCYF was particularly affected by those budget cuts. And during the ensuing years were some of the most difficult days for DCYF. It's when we saw the caseloads explode. It's when we saw a lack of workers. It's when we saw a lack of services. It's when we saw the department de facto change the definition of abuse and neglect, which has now been codified, so that fewer children were able to access the services that were available, leaving more families to fend for themselves. It was, in fact, the deaths of multiple children in the 2014, 2015 era that prompted the commissions that ultimately recommended creating this office. I bring that up not simply to talk about history, but to tie it to today. Today, with the COVID crisis, we are also seeing currently about $135 million shortfall in state budget revenues. We are already assured that the next budget cycle will be quite difficult, and there will be cuts across the board again next year. We have just dug out of the hole that we created for ourselves a number of years ago in order to protect children. This office is a very important part of that and will be an essential part of that as we move forward through the next budget. I apologize for my cat. This office will be essential to stay above political considerations and only look at what is in the best interest of children. And I think, and for that reason, among the others you've heard, is a reason to make sure this office exists, but exists in full independence. There is robust oversight, as you heard, and Dr. O'Neill, I know, has provided you with a list of the OCA's publications for the past couple of years. I would encourage you to take a look at it. It is a substantial list showing the work they have done, and there is far more work that they will be able to do over the next several years. With that, I would simply ask you to support the bill and expand the scope of the office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeJoy. Are there any questions from the committee? I don't see any. So thank you, Mr. Joy. The final speaker I have is, I need to speak with Christina. Is he able to speak with us?
Yes, he is.
Somebody who couldn't register, I guess.
Okay. Giles Bissinette?
Giles Bissinette. Okay, very good. Mr. Bissinette?
Here we go.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. And I'm not sure if I'm on video as well, but I'd be happy to have video if that's what the committee prefers.
Whatever you prefer.
Okay. Well, I actually would like to have video, so let's see if I can do it.
Go for it.
Okay. Bear with me for one moment. I'm trying to get my computer up here. Or I don't know if the moderator has the ability to turn my video on.
Yeah, I don't see you in the, oh, I do see you. Yeah, there's no video access under your name.
Just a moment.
Hi, am I, can I be viewed now?
Yes, sir, you can.
Oh, good. Thank you so much. My apologies for the tech issues. My name is Gilles Bissinette. I'm the Legal Director for the ACLU of New Hampshire. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, recognizing that we are close towards the end of the day. This is a bill that the ACLU This is a bill that the ACLU supports. We recommend that this bill be voted out of committee ought to pass, because we think it's critical for the Office of the Child Advocate to be independent in order to ensure that it can adequately protect children and perform its government accountability function without undue pressure. I am aware, I'm going to really limit my testimony to the legal, constitutional, and separation of powers issues raised by the Attorney General's Office. I am aware that the Department of Justice did submit a letter with their concerns. We yesterday submitted a letter addressing the Attorney General's concerns and our belief that those concerns are unfounded. I do hope that the committee received that letter. If it did not, I'd be happy to circulate it individually to all the members. But I would just say, really, I really want to make three points. And number one is just how independence is really essential and necessary in this case. And it's essential and necessary, because the work of the Office of the Child Advocate is inherently going to be intention and adverse to DCYF and potentially other state agencies. And so now you have a situation where you have two agencies that have conflicting interests, potentially. And independence is essential, because if you have the Department of Justice, say, representing or managing both entities, there is a potential conflict. One could imagine that conflict obviously occurring if the OCA wants to issue a subpoena, understandably, so to DCYF for documents. And so that is why I think it is so critical that the OCA exists independently to really avoid even the appearance of those types of conflicts and to give the OCA the independence and free rein, without undue pressure it needs, to do its work. On point two, on the constitutional issues, there is no separation of powers problem with this bill. This bill does not, as the Department of Justice say, create an unaccountable fourth branch of government. It does not do that. And it doesn't do that for several reasons. And let me just say, at the outset, I think the first reason is because the office exists within the executive branch. We still have three branches of government in New Hampshire, like the federal system, the judiciary, the executive branch, and the legislature. The OCA in this bill still exists within the executive branch, one of the three branches of government, here within, I think it's the Office of Administrative Services. That is something that is perfectly appropriate for the legislature to do. But there is also no separation of powers concerns here, because the OCA can and still be effectively controlled, or there is some modicum of control that the executive branch here, the governor, has on the OCA. And I know that the director talked about some of these, but I think it's worth rearticulating. The director can be terminated by the executive branch for malfeasance, misfeasance, inefficiency in office, et cetera. Those provisions are in RSA 4:1, which are bootstrapped into this bill. In addition, the Attorney General, the governor, or any member of the Executive Council can petition the governor and council for removal. So, the Attorney General, even if this bill were to enacted, to be enacted, could actually attempt to remove the director. That is, I think, actually appropriate check on the director's power. And I think really blunts the Department of Justice's argument that, you know, this office really is just a fourth branch unaccountable agency, which it clearly is not. And then, of course, under RSA 4.1, the director can ultimately then be removed upon a vote by the governor and executive council. In the federal context, a lot of these issues were actually litigated when there was a challenge to the independent counsel statute. This was a constitutional challenge that went to the U.S. Supreme Court. And that's a case called Morrison versus Olson. That was the independent counsel statute. And the Supreme Court said that there are adequate checks for that independent counsel to do its work. The independent counsel needs to be independent, but there was enough executive branch oversight to eliminate any constitutional problems. It's exactly the scenario that we have here with respect to the OCA. That is to say, the OCA and this bill are constitutional, really for all of the same reasons that the independent counsel statute was constitutional in Morrison over thirty years ago. And also, I think there's no separation of power concern issue here as well, because the governor and executive council, of course, appoint the OCA. It's true that there's an Oversight Commission that's tasked with recommending the director of the OCA, but the bill does not require that the governor and executive council adopt, actually, any of those recommended candidates. That's actually appropriate in order to eliminate separation of powers concerns and to eliminate any concern that this could become a rogue agency. The third point I want to make, and it relates to my introductory remarks, is that as a policy choice, the legislature can give investigatory powers to another executive branch agency. That's just not the Department of Justice. That's what this bill is doing. There are good reasons to actually embed these powers with a non-Department of Justice agency. I won't get into the legal analysis there of why that's appropriate, but it's something that certainly can be done by statute. That is what this bill does. And again, to reiterate, it's embedding these investigatory powers within one of the three branches of government, the executive branch, not a fourth branch. So, with that, I'll conclude my testimony, which I also submitted last night. Thank you very much.
Very good. We did get your testimony. Thank you. So, any questions of Mr. Bissonette? I don't see any, so thank you, Mr. Bissonette. And I don't believe, Christina, are there any others that I'm not seeing that are willing, that are wanting to testify?
I do not see any hands raised at this point, and everyone on the list has testified.
Very good. So, I'll close the hearing on Senate Bill 295. And, or was that of DeSimeoni? Do you still request the caucus? You do? So, you want to do, it's five o'clock. You want to do ten minutes? We come back at, is that enough time, or?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so we'll come back at 5:10.
Thank you. If everybody could just make sure they mute and shut off their video, that would be great. Thank you. Come on. Okay.
And we're back. I wonder if we can read lips. Republicans are having their caucus. Hi, Gabby. Hello.
Hi.
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 Hi. Hello?
Okay. Okay, being okay, being 5:10, I'll open the executive session on House Bill 1716 and call upon Representative Marion. He's, he can't unmute himself. Okay.
On House Bill 1716, I make a motion of interim study.
Second by Representative Grossman. In discussion. I have Representative DeSimeoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are back from our caucus, and we definitely will not I'm not seeing anybody that wants interim study. But you can call the roll.
Is there any other discussion? See, and then when the clerk is, actually, I got Representative Horn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my big objection to interim study would be along the lines of, we've heard plenty of testimony today that there's something unjust about the system that's currently in place, and maybe more attention would be paid to the situation if we have, if we adopt HB 1716. more attention would be paid to the situation if we have, if we adopt HB 1716. It would send a message, I believe, that this is something that needs attention that while we may lack the statutory authority to affect the federal standards, the federal standards are obviously not working. So rather than interim study, which in the COVID-19 situation is unlikely to have anything done on it, I would suggest that we adopt this so that it gets somebody's attention.
Representative Rice?
Yes, thank you. I agree with Representative Horn. I don't think that kicking this to the curb is the answer. Interim study is a polite death. And I just don't see, I think this is something that needs to be addressed now. Thank you.
And I don't see this as kicking it to the curb, as Representative Horn said, that maybe something will happen. I, I'm not comfortable with with passing, supporting a bill that may do something. In testimony, the the emphasis was on the state following the federal guidelines. We've heard of that. And also, the what was it? There was a, there was a House bill that's addressing this, this standard, the guideline standard, which appears to me would be the avenue with which this would go. I'm on I mean, a lot of testimony was on several federal, federal statutes or whatever they call them. Of which I, I've been trying to get answers to some of these and I just couldn't get them. You know, I had questions that I couldn't get answered. So I don't feel that the passage of House Bill 1716 is going to address it. What it will do is throw everything in a stir. I, and I'm not, I'm not prepared to support something that that'll do that. I don't believe this passage helps the issue that we're looking to address. So Representative Yocella?
Thank you. I think that what the testimony showed us today is that the more, not so much the federal guidelines, but our specific custody or child support formula is broken and that we need to address that. And that is something that I think that both sides of this issue would support moving forward with. And so I think that there is some appetite for trying to address that issue in a more holistic way, I guess, instead of piecemealing, trying to attack each individual problem that the child support formula creates. And so as long as we're moving forward with that issue and trying to fix that formula, I think that, I think we're on the right path.
I have Representative Weber.
Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for your hospitality. I spent a certain amount of time while we were listening to testimony, also reading some of the federal statutes that were cited. And while my heart just aches for the people who are caught in this particular bind, I think that Representative Yocella is correct. It needs to be looked at globally. If we just proceed with this particular bill, I do believe, having looked at it, and I, this is not the kind of attorney I am, I gotta tell you. And I'm long past my sell-by date as an attorney anyway. But the federal statute is talking about what you may do, not what you must do. And that's the one that they were citing and the one that the informational message came out about. And at the same time, there is the other statute that does, in fact, require us to take all income into account. And so I think that by trying to fix one specific problem with this one specific bill, we are very likely to get ourselves into a larger mess and a larger morass that's going to affect even more people. So I think that the, the broader, more global look is, is a better way to go. Thank you.
Christina, I just got a text. Cassie, Representative LeVek is not able to get back in for some reason?
I've got her, thank you. She'll be here in just a moment.
Very good. Representative Marion?
Yeah, thank you. I, I, I agree with, with Representative Yocella and Representative Weber. I, in fact, have been working with Brenda Towne, who was a woman who spoke towards the end and explained about a group that she's been working with. And we've been working together for about the last oh, three or four months to try and address some of the issues around equal parenting. And she obviously is, was concerned about this, this issue as well. And I think that expanding on the, what, what should be the work of, of HB 362 in interim study is important. And I've kind of agreed, as most of you know, I'm going to be leaving the house, but over the, in the fall, trying to really work to pull these various threads together, working with the, and also using the work that the UNH report had, to be able to come together with some sort of comprehensive com legislation for, that you all can introduce next, next year. So, and I, I, that's why I'm going with interim study.
Representative DeSimone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really think that it's time to stop allowing people to live the way they're living, especially the veterans. This is a compensation. This isn't, this is not income. These people are physically and mentally injured for the rest of their lives. This money is not income. It should not be considered income. It is not federally taxed, taxed. Therefore, we should vote to pass this bill and get these veterans back in society and give them their money back. Thank you.
Representative Horn?
Mr. Chairman, I I know that in the past, states have taken up legislation when they feel that an issue is important enough. We haven't seen a constitutional convention in this country because if enough states pass a certain type of legislation, Congress gets off their tukuses and passes the amendments to the Constitution that the states wanted in the first place. So we've never had a constitutional convention for that specific reason. I feel strongly that by New Hampshire sending a message that the federal system that manages this affair isn't protecting our veterans, we give this Congress the same opportunity to amend the federal statutes to reflect what is fair and what is just. There is a huge difference between Social Security disability and the Veterans Affairs disability, which is not being recognized in the system at the point, at this point. So I would urge my colleagues to consider voting no on IS so that we can adopt this legislation and send our delegation in Washington a signal that, hey, pay attention to this because people are dying because this is being mismanaged. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Camerota?
Thank you, Chairman. Committee members. In my short tenure, I have seen our committee attend to small details of a larger picture and pass things with the hope that next time we can add a little bit more. Sometimes it's so big, we can't get, just can't do it. It gets too convoluted. So we do little and hope for the best and then do a little bit more. I've seen that over and over again. What I saw today is something that I'm very aware of, and that is desperate people. Our veterans. And the suicide rate is an incredible piece of data on veterans. And to have these people come forward to us saying they've been going through this for years is not acceptable. There is no reason that we can't do this one piece to say we've got a serious problem and we want a feds or we can do maybe through SB 362 or HB 362, maybe we can even do better with that bill. But this bill should, we should say no to IS and we should do OTP to help our veterans. They are desperate. We, we, our hearts are tugged when we talk about children. We're talking about our veterans. And they have done the most incredible service for our country. And we need to help them and we need to help them be fathers. Most of them were men to their children, which they kept saying over and over. I can't take care of my child. I have them for 60% of the time. I have them for 50% and I can't have a one bedroom. I have to have a two bedroom and that takes away from the child. It's absurd what we heard today. So I agree with Deb and Warner. I say no on IS and it ought to pass. Thank you.
Representative Panasek, tea?
Panasek, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm sorry, as a substitute, I don't know if, if allowed to speak, but I should speak as a veteran. We heard the pain that those veterans who testified shared with us. We saw one of our own committee members cry over it. I have myself gone through this about 35, 40 years ago. There's not a whole lot of money that these veterans receive. It's counted towards their total income and then has to be taken out and given to child support or whatever. However, it's dispensed. It's very painful. And I'm not an injured vet. I don't get disability. For them to have to live the life they have to live with a disability with the money that comes out and then, and then use that money, not on their disability, but for other things like child support. Not that they should, they should definitely pay the child support, but the money issue is, is the thing. We heard them, we heard their, we saw their pain. We just, I don't think we can turn a cheek. We've got to do something. Yes. We probably can't change it unless it changed federally, but we can shout out very loud to our federal delegate, delegates that this definitely needs to be changed. I believe interim study is the, is a bad thing to do. It's kind of turning the other cheek. So my recommendation would be to vote no on interim study. Pass this, send a message, say, listen, it's about time we change. We have to change this system. This is wrong. We all know it's wrong. You know it's wrong. I know it's wrong. So do the right thing and really send the message to the federal delegation. No on interim study, yes on OTP. Thank you.
Representative Corson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I find this incredibly difficult. I've taken care of these folks medically and psychiatrically since 1976. I've taken care of them in Kentucky and the coal mines. I've taken care of them in the emergency rooms of Philadelphia, Boston. I've taken care of folks in all kinds of different environments who are the folks that we have never treated well in my experience over those 40 years. They have never received what they should be receiving. And we are trying to do something on the top of something that has been dismissed since 1776 when we wouldn't pay the people that fought the Revolutionary War. And this is more of the same. And so where I get stuck is it absolutely does need to change. And I don't see this bill changing it. I see this bill having us getting caught up in trying to do something on the surface of this problem that we just simply will not, as a country, take care of the way we should be taking care of. And that leads me to the conclusion that I would not support the bill. And I continue to be it's just hard to even know where to go with what my own personal experiences have been with hundreds, thousands of people though, over these decades. And this is really disturbing, but I can't support it.
Representative Rice, I thought I saw your hand up here, but I don't see you anymore. You're okay?
Okay, so I, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just so we're clear, the federal apportionment, apportionment part of this is supposed to be geared towards for the kids. That's why they get it. So why are we taking their other money? And I do think we have to send a message. Because enough is enough. I have, I'm so furious that the court didn't even give us the time to come here today and address any of this with us. They have no accountability whatsoever. And it's time that we take the ball by the horns and pass this bill, not interim study. It needs to be OTP. Show these veterans we care. I've had enough. That's where I'm at. I forgive me for yelling, but this has been, this was very emotional for me today. I'm so tired of hearing these stories. I'm tired of it. And we have to fix it. And I'm voting OTP. I'm not voting for interim study. Thank you.
Seeing, seeing no more questions? Last, Representative Connors to call the roll. The question is, and I believe 1920, we have everybody, everybody here on the committee. So Representative Connors, if you could
Do you have a second? Do you have a second?
Representative Camerota?
Do, we do. It was
Do you have a second? Who was your second?
It was moved by Representative Marion and seconded by Representative Grossman.
Thank you.
So Representative Connors, the question is on House Bill 1716 interim study.
Thank you. Representative Marion?
He's got a thumbs up. He's not able to unmute himself.
Yes, I.
Representative Mulligan?
Yes.
Representative Connors is a yes. Representative Corson?
Aye.
Was that an aye?
Yes.
Thank you. Representative Diggs?
Yes.
Representative French?
No.
Representative Grossman?
Yes.
Representative LeVek?
Yes.
Representative Petrino? Representative Petrino?
Yes, yes.
Representative Weber?
Yes.
Representative Wazir?
Yes.
Representative DeSimone?
Absolutely no.
Representative Rice?
No.
Representative Horn?
No.
Representative Camerota?
No.
Representative Fowler?
Hell no.
Representative Jurius?
No.
Representative Yocella?
Yes.
Representative Panasek?
No.
Chairman Long?
Yes.
12 yea, 8 nay.
Okay. I'll open the executive session for Senate Bill 295.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Was that a no on consent, and do we have a minority report on that?
Yeah, no, it's not going on consent. And is there a minority report? There is, yes. Representative Jurius?
I'm happy to write it unless someone else would like to. I'm willing.
Okay, so Representative Jurius will write a minority report. Christina?
How do I, how do I do that?
Yeah, Christina, when are these due? You're still muted.
I apologize. Let me get back to you on that. Let me just double-check to make sure that I have the exact date. But I will definitely get back to you in just a moment.
Can you tell me how to even submit it?
Yeah, I'll let you know. I'll let you know who to submit. I'll let you know who to submit it to. When she gives me a timeframe, I'll let you know who we're going to submit it to. Christina, is it going to be submitted to you? Do you know?
It actually, it should be submitted, let me see. You can submit it to me. That will be fine. And then we need this for the calendars, so probably by tomorrow. You can actually submit it to Karen or Heather, actually, would be fine.
And is that a barian? OTPass?
Yes, OTPass. To whom? Can someone email me an email address to send?
Yes, I will absolutely do that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, very good. Senate Bill 295. Open the executive session and recognize Representative.
Diggs.
Representative Diggs, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I enthusiastically make the motion that Senate Bill 295 ought to pass.
Is there a second? Representative Grossman? So Representative Diggs, Representative Grossman? Grossman? Discussion? See, no discussion? Representative Camerota?
Thank you. I just want to say that I think the intention of the bill is excellent. I just can't bring myself to vote in favor of it with what the Attorney General's Office shared with us. So if that got resolved under some sort of feedback or an amendment, then I would be in favor of it. But the way it stands, I cannot support it.
Okay, any further discussion? See, and then when the clerk's ready, if she could call the roll on Senate Bill 295 OTPass.
Representative Barian?
Yes.
Representative Mulligan?
Definitely, yes.
Representative Connors is a yes. Representative Corson?
Yes.
Representative Diggs?
Yes.
Representative French? Representative.
Can you give a thumbs up, Representative French? Yes, I'm sorry, not a, whatever thumbs.
Representative Grossman?
Yes.
Representative Levesque?
Yes.
Representative Petrino?
Yes.
Representative Weber?
Yes.
Representative Wazir?
Yes.
Representative DeSimone?
Yes.
Representative Rice?
Yes.
Representative Horn?
Yes.
Representative Camerota?
No.
Representative Fowler?
Yes.
Representative Jurius?
Yes.
Representative Yocella?
No.
Representative Panasecki?
Yes.
Chairman Long?
Yes.
18 yea, 2 nay.
Very good. We'll put this on the regular calendar also, because there was a, there was an FN. She said there wasn't, but there was an FN, so.
So it cannot go on consent?
Oh, God, yeah, no, it can't go on consent.
Yeah, no, we'll put it on a regular. Yeah.
The minority report, not doing that again.
Actually, Representative Yocella or Camerota, you want to do a minority report? Representative Camerota will do a minority report.
And what is your alternative motion, Representative Camerota?
Interim study, maybe?
Let's talk about that. Interim study better than IPO?
I think, I think you should go with interim study. That's my opinion.
Well, I need a little, am I unmuted? I am. Because it's the end of the session, what is the best thing to do so that we can revisit it? That it's not going to be revisited, but I would take the chair's recommendation, whether it's interim study, will it come back? No.
No.
Well, not this year.
Minority.
No, nothing.
There'll be a report in November that you'll have to supply. So, yeah, the clerk just needs to know what your motion would be.
I will do interim study.
Very good. Is that it, Representative Connors?
That's it. I'm all set.
So we're good. Hey, I want to thank everybody. This was a long day. This was a hard day. And I want to thank, we have all the members that are still here, and that's awesome. Representative Diggs?
Yes, thank you. Christina?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you also send me the outline of what we need to do to write our reports?
Sure, I'm happy to do that for you.
Great, thank you so much.
And then Representative Horn has his hand up?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, so you've shared with us that all of these House bills that we want have gone over to the Senate through crossover, which means the Senate bills have come the same way. Can you share with us if it's your intention to hold public hearings on all of the Senate bills that their version of child endangerment law sent us?
So being the chairman of Children and Family Law, that's all I'm responsible for, and all my decisions are when we're in this committee. Leadership and the clerk's office and both leaderships decide how they're going to move forward with these Senate bills. I haven't heard of another hearing for us, so.
Can I ask you if your preference is then that we would be hearing, having public hearings on all of the legislation that the Senate is sending, considering that it's what we elected to do?
If it would be doable, I'd be amenable to that, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your conversation.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody. Christina, are we all set?
You are all set. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Christina.
Congratulations.
Christina, am I scanning documents, or am I scanning them to Paul?
You would scan them to Paul and to Heather.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So Christina, you're going to give me an email to?
I am. I'm going to send it in just a moment.
Thank you.
Christina, could you, could you send one to me as well?
Absolutely. More than happy to.
To everybody who.